Yeah, there's crazy shit, stuff going on.
I believe eight or 10 times as much email as I do.
Oh, good. I'm glad I didn't send my questions to you.
Everything in for the last 10 years.
Yeah. So for this?
This is not going to be on consent.
Okay.
This was screwed up.
Okay.
There's my mistake. There was miscommunication between me and Deb.
Okay.
And originally we planned for consent, but then you can't do this on consent. You can't talk about using.
Right. Oh, okay, okay. And then my other one is dealing with the verbiage on here for our favorite location. It says council representative looking into civil lawsuit. Yeah, and it's on both lines for it, so. Because I, okay, because I had someone ask me about it. I'm like, uh, no, it's the city. Yeah, okay, because, um, and then, do we know? Because it has the, our new location up near your place. Do we know if it's still there? Girl or? Yeah, fine, after the fact. It wasn't approved yet.
We're honest here.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, no, I'm talking about the RB.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I was talking about the RB, it's one of the O's, what is here is actually.
Okay, yeah, because my question was. Okay, okay. Oh, um, I just would like to acknowledge Officer Knutson as American Legion Post Corps 60 Officer of the Year.
That's great.
So I just. That's a kudo. Um, yeah, yeah, no, 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 well, regarding permits, and it goes back to regarding the fence and stuff like that. Just what instruction are given to people who come in to get it and do we, you know, beside neighbors and council reps, inquiring about, does the city do any drive bys to see if they've started work?
Yeah, they are. We do. So maybe for, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, okay. Right, right. Right. Right, right. Status of hiring new airport manager.
We are not, we have no money.
Okay.
So what do you want me here to make?
So right now, I'm talking about, I'm just, I'm just setting up the operation.
Okay.
And we had a discussion with the airport.
Board, yeah.
There's a safety protocol.
Right.
I'm going to use down to you.
I'll send you everything I have.
So I'll just let you work.
I just, I have a, I mean, I don't know.
Oh, my God.
Somebody was sitting around, you know, I wanted to see Captain Clark asking how many cities are going four day weeks, you know, because you guys. It would be nice.
It's ours.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, my God. So now we're, okay. Yeah, yeah, but still. Right. Right.
Public partners. This may were authorized in purchase of used trucks.
Two options.
Huh?
Two options. First option is a used one, second option is. Uh, there were a couple of examples. One had like 6,000, one had like 60,000.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, I know, I know these busts, but every time he comes to the store and everything, so. Alrighty, alright, thank you.
Because they presented two different options, and so you determine the option that you like, and you vote on it. Oh, no, no, we're removing it off. No, you're absolutely right. Deborah, just tell me when you're ready. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order at 5:31. Let's start with a roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District 1.
Paul Carey for District 2, Bill Keane, District 3.
David Mers, District 4.
Herb Dyer, District 5.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor, all present and accounted for. Please stand with me for the pledges of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation after that.
The mayor of Florida. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
Well done. After the invocation, I'm sorry, we have Pastor.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm Pastor Kevin Portwood at Medina Valley United Methodist Church. Sorry. This is my daughter Harper. Harper, do you want to say hi? She had her field day. She's in kindergarten at Castroville Elementary, and this is her first city council meeting. We'll see how long she'll ask.
Welcome.
Yeah, this is local government. You get to see decisions get made, and it's really great. Do you want to, I know, you want to pray with me? Here, we're going to say a prayer, okay? Invite God to be a part of this. Let's pray, let's pray. Holy God, we are thankful to gather as leaders in the community, as concerned citizens, as people trying to be good neighbors to one another. Lord, we are thankful for this amazing community, for its schools and its local businesses, for its citizens. Lord, for the ways that you are bringing new life and growth and giving vision to this leadership on how to steer us through that in the best possible way. Lord, I pray that you would cover us in your grace. May this gathering, this meeting be pleasing in your sight. Help us to share your love with everyone who connects with our town. In Jesus' name, amen.
Well done. All right, next item is citizens' comments. Would anybody like to speak for citizens' comments? Please state your name and your address. For the record.
Hi, I'm Lisa Schwers. My address is 2602 Avenue K, Hondo, Texas, and 8627 Berry West Court in San Antonio.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of the Alsatian Festival of Texas to bring some information to you and thank you for your participation in the success of this festival. You have a handout that was passed to you. We had such a successful festival this year, thanks in part to what the city has done to promote us. By putting the flyers in the local utility bills, it spread the word out to the local community, which brought the people in. And beyond that, the only other advertising besides the newspaper, local media, was that we used a social media platform of Facebook. And the shocking number that was on the front part of this is, we reached an audience, and I'm using a more conservative number here by saying, we reached an audience of over 230 million people. And it still boggles my mind. How did we do that? Partly because of what this city does, what the Chamber of Commerce does, local businesses and private individuals. Every time we posted something, and the city or the chamber or a business would share that, it spread further and further. And that's how we were reaching this audience. It got to where I was being contacted by people in France, in Canada, in Germany, not to mention Louisiana, California, Florida, Ohio, and Minnesota, because they were so excited about coming to Castroville for this event to find out about more about our culture, which is so unique to this community. So moving beyond that engagement with that audience, we've also discovered that the majority of this audience, 80% of them are women. So now we know who we're marketing to in the future. And of those women, 60% of them are over the age of 45. These are the people who are determining what the family's going to do that weekend. So these are the people we will be trying to target in the future. The other side that shows the circle here, this is where you see that demographic there. Our followers, 72% are women that are following us, and they will continue to as long as we keep posting. We had people attend from Austin and Houston. Our largest audience came out of San Antonio, followed by Castroville and then Hondo. So from here, we can only do, what we can do now is keep growing, keep going, keep growing, and let's continue with this. I really appreciate what the city has done to promote it. One other thing on here, on the left side of it, the largest interaction engagement we had was the post. We reached 13,000 people just by posting the Alsatian drinking song. Where did these 13,000 people come from? I don't know, but that post got more engagement than anything else. So we're going to continue with it. The second most engaged post, if any of you saw it, was the little video of our Alsatian visitor, Teo Meyer, who came from Alsace. He was standing in front of the Henry Castro House singing the Hansim Schnokelock song. And as people could hear the pronunciations and the words and how it was performed, that got people interested in listening to that type of song, and more people engaged with it. And we also could see every time that somebody was forwarding or sharing that, I would get a message back on our platform that would say, Mark Havy has shared this. Okay, if he shares it, then all the other people that share it past that second hand, third hand, fourth hand, we don't know. We just know who the first person is that shares it, so it's spreading out even further. So every time that the city moves forward with one of those posts, it's growing. So I'm hoping it's going to make Castroville grow farther as well. I think that's it.
I wasn't what?
You weren't busy at all.
I have to say it to him because we're not allowed to interact with him.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
That's a great report. It's nice to see the kind of impact on the community. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for citizens' comments? I actually wanted to share something for citizens' comments. Should I state my name and address? Darren Schroeder, 1410 Teals, Castroville. I wanted to call out just a thank you. The community has really rallied around. I don't know if you heard about Gabe and Abigail. They're, they have a food truck that they've been taking around the community, and there was an accident. The food truck caught on fire, burned the food truck, burned their truck. It wasn't something that the insurance covered, and that was their livelihood. And there's a group of people that have been getting together. They're doing a fundraiser for them on, they started up a GoFundMe. There's a fundraiser for them at Shatten Bowl on June 4th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And they'll be selling plates, and if anybody wants to donate or if anybody wants to help out with that, please, you can just get in touch with me, and I'll help you get connected with them. I just, that's a great example of something that, it's just, it's something that's happening in the community, and people from all over, both inside Castroville, outside of Castroville, all the way to La Causse, to Honda, to Rio Medina, are locking together for this family and just trying to help them out. It just really.
Shatten Bowl, when and what, what time?
June 4th.
June 4th.
And again, that is from.
That's a Saturday?
Four to 8:00 p.m., yes. I kept that under two minutes, too. All right. Yeah, I'll have to find out. There's, there's a couple of, a couple of posts that have already been made about it. We'll make sure that we get it out of the chamber so that people can see it, we'll get it out of the city.
I don't have my phone, so I can't add it to it.
Okay, I'll make sure. Next item is consent agenda. We're actually going to pull item F off of the consent agenda, and we'll put that to a separate item by itself. So the consent agenda includes the minutes for May 9th, 2023 special call, council meeting slash work session, minutes for May 9th, 2023 regular called city council meeting, adopting a resolution declaring various equipment surplus, adopt a resolution on a donation of that surplus property to the Medina Valley ISD for use in auto mechanics training program, and adopt a resolution on supporting city's application to the Texas Department of Transportation's 2023 transportation alternatives set aside, the TA, call for projects. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
As we approve the consent agenda as edited.
Great. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the vehicle donation to the school, have, did we think about possibly, instead of donating all the vehicles to the school, about possibly donating one to the VA to help disabled veterans?
Well, this is a consent item. We're removing it from consent for discussion.
Oh, okay, never mind.
You can. It's simple. Just remove it, and then we can discuss it.
Let's remove it.
Okay.
Okay, will you modify your motion then to remove that one as well?
Yes.
All right.
Great.
Okay, timeout. Are you moving C? Because that's the resolution that we're doing the surplus?
No.
D.
D. We're removing D and F.
Okay, because.
So you can, you can clear them surplus and then figure out what you're going to do with it. Right now, D plans for two of the vehicles.
Because one of them is already surplus. The other one is in the, is in the C, and then is also in D. That's why I was asking the question.
Okay.
So you're removing D.
We are declaring, we are declaring them all surplus, and then.
You're removing D.
Remove D to a separate. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item is formerly D, adopt a resolution on a donation of surplus property to the Medina Valley ISD for use in auto mechanics training program. So discussion on that. Sheena?
I was just putting that out there because the VA is always looking for donation of vehicles to help out disabled veterans and that.
We have not. Really, the only reason that this was brought forward is through the efforts of a former employee, David Kirkpatrick, who is working as a STEM, science, technology, engineering, math representative from the city to the school district, and was in a meeting, talking to their auto mechanic shop, someone, who just mentioned it's featured on KSAT. That's Dever, yeah. So it's on KSAT. They have 500 students or?
No, this morning at 9:00, they were doing, it's 200 students this year with one teacher. Next year, they expect 250 with two teachers. And so a lot of girls in there, and so that they, I guess this program is pretty good until they need. So it was interesting to see that this morning, knowing what we're looking at tonight.
So the VA, I'm not familiar with the VA program as far as, is it kind of like, in DFW area, they had cars for kids, basically, where it was a Can Academy. You could donate your used car, whatever, in any condition. So does the VA have a similar program?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we, again, this is being brought forward as an initiative related to the school district. Certainly, the council can consider it, do whatever you want with your surplus vehicles. There are others that have already been declared surplus. What I think we would need to do is probably bring back the complete surplus list, so you can see everything that's on it, and then see whether you want to take that to auction.
Okay, yeah.
Or if you want to have it donated to the VA or anyone else. There is a, for donations to the school, we did have a specific resolution to accomplish that, right?
So in order, so in order to, for the city to donate a surplus or salvage property, the city has to give something for it in return. So not that donation sometimes doesn't work, but what we can give some value within the community for that donation, the city has offered us to do so. So that's why the school was chosen as a work ground. Okay, I'm just throwing it out there because. Alright, thank you. Yeah, it's split in here, so.
I would suggest if we're going to explore other things like the VA, that we get the real skinny on how much of it's going to actually go to them. There's lots of charitable organizations that use the word veterans, and many of them, 95% of the money goes to the people who collected it, and the veterans get 5%. So whatever we're going to do, if we're going to, if we're going to say a veterans' organization, I would like to have somebody do the research and tell us how much is actually going to go to them before we make a decision.
So what I'm hearing is, it's probably a good idea to start looking at this for, for future possibilities as we have these opportunities. And if that's something that you wanted to champion, I think that would be great.
Yeah, I'll research what the VA program is, because I know they have it for donating vehicles to them, because it's also a tax write-off. Donating vehicles to the VA for them to fix up and do the lifts and everything.
So it probably sounds like there's a couple of things when you look at it. One is from Councilman Dyer's perspective, what are, what's the financials of that organization? Yeah, that, if the city council wants to pursue this, I would recommend some kind of policy. And then secondary to that is the legality of, how do you give away what was formerly public property? And what, you know, what do we need to do? So one of the things that you'll see in declarations, whether it's an incentive or a 380 agreement, or in this case, donation of surplus property, is there's a declaration of public good.
Right.
And that's kind of what the attorney was just speaking to, that the school district benefiting, teaching the kids, et cetera. We declare that, you declare that as a council, that that is enough of a public good to warrant the donation of this surplus vehicle. So yes, we can.
Okay.
Look into it and weigh all that stuff.
And I'll show you the information.
And so if anybody who's listening, any personal vehicles that they have, who would they contact to do that?
It would be the Veterans Administration at the Audy Murphy Hospital.
Okay, great.
That's awesome.
All right, so do I have a motion to adopt a resolution on a donation of surplus property to the Medina Valley ISD for use in auto mechanics training program?
So moved.
Second.
Great, motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is approved purchase of a replacement vehicle for the streets department. So we're pulling this off because we have a couple of different options on this, and I'll let Scott go into the details line.
Or Devon? Yeah, there are two, or Devon, yeah, there are two items. We, the short of it is, this is, we have the funding in the CIP to do it. There's some excess funding there for vehicle replacement. You will not see this truck listed in part because we had a truck that was donated from our, we did a swap with the airport, so the parks and streets typically have hand-me-down vehicles. So unfortunately, that hand-me-down vehicle bit the dust. And so given the equipment purchases that we recently, you know, engaged in with the new Skidsteer or the, I'm sorry, the.
Offcat, yes.
Offcat, and its associated equipment, we're going to need to get a heavy-duty diesel to purchase that. I know the back of items are a little difficult to read, but the gist is kind of in that summary, which is you can either buy a new one for 60, 70,000.
Right at 70, yeah.
Yeah, or buy a used one for 60. The reason, normally, I would just write this up, put it on CIP as consent, and have it adopted, which is where it was originally, but when we started to talk about his staff, we realized, you know, really, there's not a clear policy or direction from council right now, because again, typically, the streets and, and parks receive hand-me-down vehicles, and so we don't have a real clear policy on, well, what happens when one of those hand-me-downs breaks early on, early in its, in its tenure and needs to be replaced. And so we wanted to give you the options. There are some good used vehicles that we think would be viable alternatives. The issue is, it's not that big a difference between a used and a new. And being that the staff doesn't have a strong recommendation, hey, we need to go this way or that, we thought we'd put it to council and see what y'all bought. Do you have anything else to add to that, Devon?
Nope, that, that basically covers it. You know, like Scott mentioned, we, we've bought better equipment to do the job more efficiently, and with that, some of our equipment is very, very heavy, and, you know, we have different vehicles right now that we can make do, but to optimize our vehicles, we have our little dump truck, we have our big dump truck, and we have our vehicle that takes equipment around. If, if those are pulling things, they're, they're not able to really do their job. They're having to drop it off, and we're wasting time. So that's one of the reasons why we want a, a truck that can meet the need and have that longevity there.
I was just wondering, what, what happened to the 2011 350 that makes it unrepairable?
Well, we, we took it to two different mechanics, and they had it scoped, and the engine blew. This was a replacement engine that was installed in this one. To the best of their knowledge, it was a good engine, and then when it came down to it, it just.
Failed, catastrophic way.
And, and we made sure to take it to multiple people to make sure that it wasn't something that was being. that was being missed or, you know, could, could be something small. But, yeah, the engine was, I mean, they, this is the fourth engine that's been in that truck. And so it's just, it might be one of those vehicles that's just cursed and...
Diesel or, or gas?
Uh, it was a diesel.
Diesel, okay.
Was the replacement engine under any kind of warranty?
They, with, it was only a 90-day warranty with the company that we purchased it from.
And this was outside the 90-day?
Uh, yes, sir.
Like 91-day?
91-day.
Yeah, it wasn't very far outside, but...
Absolutely. Normally happens.
So are we looking at approving both vehicles?
No, just...
Just one?
No, just one. I, I, I felt it was, you know, with diesels, they have such longevity. Plus, you know, it's $10,000 less, but there's one on there that has 6,000 miles. I, I just wanted to bring it as an option so that we were, you know, looking at any way we can do it. With these diesel and newer vehicles, we, it's enticing for us because it has 100,000-mile warranty. So we have 100,000 miles. Let's just say they do 25,000 a year. That's on the high end, which is a lot higher than what we would expect. You know, there's five years, no more downtime, no more maintenance, no more extended repairs. Maintenance is always, nevertheless.
So how mu, and it says this is a budgeted item. How much did we earmark?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's in the CIP. We have excess funds in the CIP because we haven't expended all of our vehicles. Some of our vehicles we ordered didn't, aren't playing, aren't going to come in until much later. So effectively, that money is not spent until it arrives. So we've got excess funds. We can, I can basically, it's fungible. I can move some money around. So we've got plenty of funds to do it. There's, in addition to the truck, I've mentioned this to Mayor earlier. It, I'm not going to come to council with it because it's not a, an amount that needs your approval. But in addition to the truck, we will get a gooseneck trailer to go along with that to carry this equipment, ideally so that we can store the equipment on that gooseneck and, again, kind of as an efficiency thing. But that would be one advantage to going with a used model, especially if you have one with very, very little miles and we're able to secure that, because I'm going to use the extra funds to go buy the...
So this is over what we had budgeted?
That's why, that's what I'm saying. It's kind of tricky because I didn't have it budgeted. It wasn't, but, but the funds are there. I've got plenty of money in my vehicle replacement.
I understand because...
But it was not budgeted originally because originally, we had a hand-me-down that we weren't expecting to have to replace.
Right.
Usually rebuilt engines, you should, even with crud, diesel engines, get 100,000 minimum for a rebuild and it just didn't work out like that.
Yeah, I just, I just look at budgets when we say, okay, this amount, this amount, this amount of vehicles. Just because they haven't come in or what have you, we haven't flagged us for going to something else. That's why I'm asking the question.
Well, I think what we were talking about doing, and this is a little bit related, but slightly off topic, is coming back with the, the overall CIP plan with a vehicle replacement policy, with the timelines for each different department. So it would be a cradle-to-grave kind of strategy for everything that we're doing, including adding new personnel, having a policy inside of that. We're probably a few months out from that. That would be a part of the CIP scorecard that we're doing, is putting that in there as a, as a part of that. I totally agree with you. This one is unplanned because it was a break. So I would not call that a budgeted item. I would say that this would be a budget amendment to what we already have. We do have the funds available, but I think that it would be more accurate in saying that this is a budget amendment.
Yeah, it gets tricky when you're talking about a CIP because technically, at that point, budget is an adjective, I believe, or verb, because you're really, it's, you're, we think of the budget as the budget, that the general fund or enterprise fund budget that was adopted on an annual basis. The CIP lives out, outside of that, it's separate. And so then, so then when we talk about budgeted funds, we're talking about in, in the, in the most literal sense, did you plan for this expenditure or not? Was it a planned, i.e. budgeted, or not? So that's the only reason I'm, and I don't mean to sound like talking about both sides, but that's why I'm saying it's, it's, you're right. It's, that wasn't budgeted in the CIP. It wasn't planned for in the CIP. But as far as budgeted funds or funds availability, typically, when we, when we try to give you that as gender summary form, we tell you whether it's a budgeted or non-budgeted expense. And when that, when we're talking about that, we're talking about the actual adopted budget. And when the CIP comes into play, those don't apply. Because the CIP, like I said, as long as there's funds available in the CIP, it, it's, it's a quote-unquote budgeted expense because you can afford to do it. That's kind of how that...
And I, I think that just going forward, we'll nail that down. Just make it so that we, we know exactly to expect. This, we're not expecting. It happened, so...
I just don't want to get us caught with our pants down.
Yeah.
Because these vehicles could drop out of the sky, no note, hey, look, it's here, one of our money.
Right. We're, we're not going to be in that situation. You're good. You have, I think it's $230,000 in the, in the CIP, in the, in the vehicle equipment replacement fund that hasn't been spent and isn't completely allocated. So you're, we're safe there. Now, I'm going to tell you something later as part of our budget workshop that, about our bond issuance and future debt and that kind of thing.
What are you recommending? 60 or 70?
Well, it's up to you. Again, we, we're ambivalent to whether you go with used or new. It'll be up to the council to make that decision. But a used, it would be 60 and a new, a new would be 70.
Could we make the, could we leave it a little bit open-ended to say that it would be approved for up to $70,000? And if, if staff can acquire something that is, that, that's basically a 15% difference to do the used? If we can do that with less than 15% of its lifespan? So an $80,000 vehicle, that's probably, that's already at a third of its lifespan, expected lifespan?
80,000 miles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because one of those on there was like 80,000 miles.
Right.
So that's a third of its lifespan. So expected life, I would expect a diesel's 200,000 miles. The 6,000 is much less than that. So I think that if we do that...
The short is you can do whatever you want. You're the council. But if, if the mo, if the motion, the motion would be to approve an amount not to exceed and then fill in the blank and allow staff to discretion, discretion to buy used or new with the caveat that if it's used, that the mile, the number of miles don't exceed 25,000 or whatever you want to, whatever amount you want to cap it at. Is that, is that in the flavor of what you were thinking of?
That's, yeah, that's kind of what I was saying. The benefit of the used car, like Devon was saying, is that you get that extended warranty because the new cars nowadays, what do they have, a 36, 48 month?
I compared all Chevy because they're diesel trucks. They offer 100,000 for the powertrain and for the, the engine.
When it's new?
Same. It's, it's...
New or, or new or certified used?
Five-year, 100,000-mile warranty. Doesn't matter if it's a 6,000 or if it's the, well, of course, it's the brand-new when it starts then. But, yeah, they, they'll honor it for us. Well, they honor it for any purchase.
Certified, yes, or certified used.
And are we looking on the back, backboard for this?
The what? The byboard?
Backboard.
Well, so we have, what's interesting is, a byboard isn't always guarantee of the lowest price. Certainly, that makes our, our acquisition easier in a lot of cases. But we found recently, when we were, especially when we were shopping for vehicles, byboard hasn't been the best deal. So the short answer is yes. And we have more than just a byboard, which is HGAC. There's, there's a couple of different ones that we look at and we're going to look for the best deal, whether it's a vehicle or a consultant agreement or a contractor or wherever. We try to find the lowest price. And ironically, some of those, some of those organizations we join, the prices aren't, aren't, sometimes they're 10 or 15% difference, higher.
And the majority of the byboard contract, they have to be ordered because the dealership gets zero profit on it. So they don't want to sell what they have currently. So, or just not creating any vehicles right now. So they were automatically thrown out. Dodge, they're up there in price and I personally prefer Chevy just because we have multiple on there and, you know, the parts, I mean, they're a little bit cleaner. It's just personal preference. But, yes, that, no, to say byboard, we always go with that. But like Scott said, it's not always cheaper and then they, they just didn't have any. So that's one of the reasons, Mayor, you pointed out, 80,000, 6,000. There's probably five in Texas for sale and they move so fast, it's ridiculous. So...
So maybe some leeway would be advisable anyway because there's no guarantee that, well, the ones that we've provided and you're packing are still available.
So then the motion would be then for staff to purchase the best possible vehicle, not at, at, an amount not to exceed $70,000?
Sure.
And do we want to put a mileage with no more than X miles or does that matter?
I don't think so. I think that it's at the discretion of staff. They're, they've proven themselves to be very diligent about making sure that we're getting a good deal, long-term, total cost of ownership. So I would trust them in doing that.
Okay. That was one of the questions Scott had for us.
Yeah.
I will make that motion.
Great. I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great. Thank you, Devon. Thanks, Scott. Uh, next item is discussion on FY '23 budget revenues and expenditures, general fund and enterprise fund.
All right. For this, we have a presentation. We're going to see if this works. I didn't test the TV today. But I did test the remote. The presentation. Officer Quick, is that TV on?
It is.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So first, I want to show off the new remote. Look at that.
Nice.
So Mayor and I, y'all saw this. Matt Lewis?
That was, yep.
Yeah, he, what's that?
On that side.
Matt's up. Oh, it's unplugged here.
What? Did I do this?
Oh, this, that's possible. We, I'm trying to think of it. We, we had, we had some...
So, aren't you supposed to stay on the, the...
Tinfoil of the... In tinfoil, the code name.
Yeah.
Put tinfoil on it.
Tinfoil.
See how long that is? So that, and then, I think, look at that. It's a laser pointer.
Terms and policies.
What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, it's on your remote.
It's on the remote. Jeez, God. Here it is. Huh?
Nicely done.
Yeah, well. I'm getting my... Let's get this back to you. All right. So much for showing off. So we're, this is our agenda for this evening. I want to stress, this is a very rough draft budget. We're a little bit further behind than we were last year on preparation of the budget as far as Leroy and I are concerned. And I think part of that has to do with just the workshops we did. We did two in a row. The one over at ELSUS and then the one with y'all. And that has taken its toll on my budget prep. And so you're going to see some of that tonight. But what we're going to do is review audited numbers, just show you where you're sitting today on your revenue and expenditures. And then we'll look at some of our forecasts for this upcoming year. And then we'll look at what the requested general fund expenditures are. The requested expenditures, I'm making that designation or that differentiation between requested and proposed because that's what this is. This is the early draft of the requested budget. So we have not met with all the department heads yet. We've received their requests and we've put them in and this is, and that's where we're at. There's a lot of cleanup to do. We know, for, for instance, there's a couple of errors in our, some of our formulas for how cost sharing goes between the enterprise and general fund. It's small cleanup items that we're aware of, but that's, you're going to see some of that tonight. And I'll, I'll point it out when we get to those. So first is your audited 2022 numbers. So keep in mind, our 2022 audit closed September, is for the year that closed September 30th. So it's the last fiscal year. So this is what that produced. Notably, your days on hand for general fund fund balance climbed to 504 days on hand. That's a, that's a pretty tremendous amount. And there's your totals along the bottom. And then this is your enterprise fund balance with its number of days on hand as well. And you'll see the balance went up, the days on hand went down. We talked about this kind of, I believe, during the last budget cycle. When this happens, that's because you're, you have an overall expenditure increase. And so your days on, you may have more money on hand, but your debt, number of days on hand actually went down because you have to account for the additional operation costs. Here's your revenue versus expenditures with transfers. And this is just to kind of give you a holistic view of what the transfers do to the overall funds and what's available. So you can see, there's your revenues, your expenditures, I'm sorry, yeah, your expenditures kind of flatlined year over year. That's good. Small tick-up in 20, in 2020. And then as you, when you look at transfers, transfers leveled out as well. That was because we went to a franchise model. We put some of our hard costs into the enterprise fund. That's a portion of Leroy's time, my time, the HR, city secretary, the folks that are doing dual work and dropped them to a flat, I think it's three and a half percent rate. Now, I think I shared this with you before. From a franchise agreement standpoint, that's a, a low amount. It's, it's the average amount that you would expect in, if this were a corporate utility. So when you look at, for instance, what CPS, what we charge them for their franchise fee that they pay us, it's in that realm. It's in that rate. But if you look at what CPS, the city of San Antonio charges its utility for a franchise fee, it's closer to 20%. So we are, I, I feel like we're being fiscally responsible, responsible, but also I want you to understand that there is latitude when it comes to franchise fees. We've adopted a franchise fee that is comparable to what you see in the open market. It is not at all comparable to what you see in the initially owned utility market. I'm thinking of my days in Flatonia and the, the surrounding cities in that area. Many times, balanced their general fund, kept a ridiculously low property tax because their enterprise fund paid the bills generally. And that meant that the enterprise fund also had less money to invest its infrastructure. So it's not something I recommend, but again, don't want to dwell on that too much. Here's your property and sales tax. The kind of bad thing about this slide is if you were to read books on government finance, one of the things that they recommend is that you, that your property tax should exceed your sales tax. And to the degree that it doesn't, that the sales tax difference, the difference between your sales tax and property tax should be treated as one-time investments. Now, the, the good thing is that right now, at least the history has been, that you've sort of done that because you've been able to add to your fund balance for each of the last four or five years. And you could say that the delta between the properties and sales tax, one way to look at that would be that that delta is more or less the amount that you're actually able to contribute to fund balance. And to the degree that fund balance is typically used for one-time expenditures, you're following that model. But by, I guess, just under generally accepted accounting principles and under, like, the, the standard advice for government finance would be that you place your, the majority of your, your revenue in your property tax line because that's the most dependable. It's not very popular because that's, you know, that's what we all pay in terms of taxes. But that's just to note that, that difference. Now, I do believe that, just real quick, so I do believe that this line, once we see Alsatian Oaks develop, once we have Country Village develop, once we have some of these other houses, housing developments, this is going to swap again, just like you saw down here. That's going to happen again. Now, I do believe sales tax, sales tax is still going to go continue up and to the right. It's going to continue to increase, but I don't think even its increases is going to keep up with what's going to happen in the property tax world. That's assuming that we see the, the return to, to housing that was there two years ago. Did you have a question, Phil? Did you have a question, Phil?
Cash flow is unique in the demographics of our very small city with quite a few people that, you know, because of the HR, get property tax relief because of a lot of the charitable area and those that are disabled have property tax relief. So it doesn't surprise me that, that we fall behind, and we have a bit of Walmart. As well as, you know, the, the, it was top five, I think, area mentioned, the top five is that.
Oh, we get ships to our houses.
And so, so I understand that. But, but you're right, after Alsatian Oaks, after we start getting full property tax out there. And I understand why they also worry about that because let's say, let's say Walmart shuts down, then we're in horrible because we've gotten lazy and sassy and relying on these monies. So they're saying be cautious, people. So I understand that, but again, cash flow is better. It's, it's never bad.
Well, if you look at it, it's, it's a lot more than that as you look at where you saw that sudden spike.
Oh, sorry.
Where you used to be able to see that sudden spike in 2018.
Right here.
Right. So you notice that gap continues to increase. So that also means that our other businesses continue to do better and better. So I think that is something to take note of.
Yeah, our values haven't dropped.
No, our values haven't dropped, but one of the things we're gonna see is that when, when Alsatian Oaks and the other developments come along, we still have terms to pay off and other, other debts. So that's gonna decelerate that growth a little bit in terms of revenue.
Yeah, so you're not giving it all away, though. You're keeping a percentage for your, for your general.
Revenue, yeah.
And you're keeping all of the INS. And that's, where that's gonna make a difference is right now, you may or not remember, again, we're gonna talk about this in a minute, we'll talk about forecast for next year. Last year, we transferred, I think, around $250,000 out of the general fund to pay debt service. And that was to pay utility debt service. And that was intentional when we issued that debt because we knew that we were gonna have to front load. Now, we didn't have to spend as much as, when they put that together and we adopted the plan, the original amount was like $375,000 or it was considerably more. And because of our property tax value growth, we didn't have to pay as much. This year, we'll have to make another payment. And this year, we are not on pace to match the growth that they anticipated from Alsatian Oaks. The, the positive sign is that they didn't have a lot of growth in the first couple of years, right? But it's gonna catch up unless we start seeing some houses built. We're gonna have to be careful. So that's, I'm getting into that message about debt issues. So I'll walk you through that in a second. Yeah, okay. So here's your budget versus actual for ad warrant taxes. And that's just to give you a look at 18 to 22, to kind of show you where we're at. And that's, the blue is the audited numbers and the yellow is what we had in our budget. Something I want to point out, because this is also gonna be important later, is when you adopt the budget, you don't know. So when the 2020, we don't get the audited number until January of '23 for 2022. And we don't know, we're at the point of adopting our budget when we really don't know how much our property taxes have been received, or how much we've received in total. One of the things that's interesting is like this was 1.3 million. This was like 1.2. Anyway, I, I'll get into it in a minute, but that led to some assumptions that were erroneous on my part. So we're sorry about that. So here's your year-to-date revenues. So what we just looked at were your audited numbers. This is what it is year-to-date. We have general fund and enterprise. Obviously, your enterprise is considerably more than your general fund as far as your overall revenues. What is missing, I think, is, was it this graph we're gonna do percentage or is probably the next one? I think we do have a percentage to show you in the, like in this block, you'll see percentage collected.
The next one.
Okay. I will say that this, if you look at this, this is, we're in a really good place for general fund for overall collections. And, and same is true of enterprise. I haven't done an end-up analysis of enterprise. That's to come, but the fact that we are not in summer yet, summer is when you get your high electric and water bills. And usually, it, it, it's like Black Friday and Thanksgiving is what pays for the rest of the year. So we're, we're sitting pretty good in enterprise as well. So this, this is where you'll see the percentages. And this goes back to kind of, I think one of the questions I received in preparing for this was, so what are we looking at when we look at these numbers? Well, what you're looking at is 87% of sales taxes have been collected and 77% of property taxes have been collected. And this is just to show you kind of what it looks like. At this, at this point in the budget cycle, we receive a preliminary estimate of what our property values are going to be. We don't know what the rate is. The rate calculation is like the very last thing that they do in July. They give us what our rate needs to be. There are two components in the math equation. Your rate times your value. So at this stage, we're doing a lot of guesswork. And the guesswork is based on what we have in audited numbers. When we were doing this guesswork last year, I made a mistake. And I'm still, it took, I spent two hours beating my head against the wall with Leroy, trying to figure out where it was. I haven't found it yet. But the short of it is, where I showed you we were at 77% of property taxes, I'm gonna give you an estimate of what our total collection is gonna look like. But our total collections is gonna be like 1.25, maybe 1,250,000? And we had estimated 1,400,000, 1,430, somewhere 1,440 if you look at your budget. So we're off by like $200,000 in the property tax, and I don't think we're gonna get it. I think it's just I overestimated it. I think part of the reason I overestimated it is when you go back and look at the 2021 estimated, our actual collections, we were up here. We actually, the next year before we got the audited number, I expected it to be about the same. We ended up getting about 1.2 million, which considerably like $200,000 less. Well, I based our estimate, I believe, on the 1.4 number. I figured it was gonna go up year-over-year. And I believe where I, honestly, I believe where the mistake was made was that rate calculation. We were playing games with our, I don't want to put that, it's not, I don't mean that in some kind of negative light, but we were working with our financial advisor to maximize the city's ability to go issue the debt for the enterprise fund. But what we did was we pushed our, we pushed our M&amp;O rate down so that we could get that INS rate as high as possible. Well, when I was figuring the budget, I don't think I figured on, I don't think I used the correct rate for the M&amp;O portion of our property taxes. And that's what you're seeing that's funding the general fund. So the good, the shining, the shining spot of this, of all this would be that when we look at our taxes, where is that slide that shows our total revenues for the year? So we're getting a $1.7 million. Was that in here? I don't see it. I don't see it. But the good news is, remember that ARPA funds that we had not recognized? They're, they're gonna be recognized in this budget year. So those are gonna hit, they'll show up on our, on our books. And it won't, it won't look as bad, frankly, but I'm frustrated because, like I said, I, I think, I think I misestimated the property tax by a considerable sum. Now, I don't want that to be a panic. It's not a panic moment. Frankly, we're conservative in estimating our expenditures anyway. I'm conservative on the revenue side, so this is another kind of bright spot. I was gonna think about it. When we look at the year-to-date collections, our average collection amount on a monthly basis, and this is what's nuts about sales taxes, is it's never like, oh, it's 5% here and 7% there. No, it's usually double digits when it's up. The problem is that when it goes down, it also, a lot of ti, it didn't go down by 2% or 3%, a lot of times it's down by double digits. So it's really hard to estimate sales taxes accurately, which is why they always recommend that you use a conservative approach. The conservative approach that we used here was we basically took last year's actual and, and multiplied by 0.95% and got to, to this number, right? And then we utilized that number. What these numbers in this column represent is your percentage collections across 30 or 30 or 35 years of history. So on average, in the month of October, the city, after you, when you get to the end of the year and you say, okay, this is how much money we collected and this is how much we collected every single month, what did, what percentage did October represent of that, of those collections? It represented 7.6%. So this is a very, this, when, if you were to like look at confidence factors, you know, how confident are you in these numbers? These, these numbers, for budget estimating purposes, are, have a, a high level of confidence. So that's why we use them.
So everybody understands what the percentage is for on this one?
Mm-hmm.
So what you do is you take the budgeted number, you multiply it by 7.6%, and that gives you 98,505. And I'm gonna admit to something, and, and it's, it's gonna be confusing, so I'm gonna apologize. But if you're to go back and look at the budget, the budget's actually not 1,305, slightly less than that because I wanted, I wanted, I didn't want to confuse you all. So the bottom line is, when you add these numbers up right now, they don't add up to 100%. They add up to 101.1%. Well, why is that? Well, it's because, it's a rounding error, and it's because you're taking these numbers irrespective of the fact that they add up to 100%. You're looking at, on average, how, how much did it add up to over 35 years? Well, over 35 years, you get slightly more than 100% is what you get. So I'm, I'm working on a mathematical formula that will, that will remove this error, but I didn't have it ready for today, so I just made it simple and I did the same.
Maybe you've used them in the last five years since, since sales taxes changed so much in the last five years.
Yeah, I look at that too, but again, like that's what this is intended to do.
See, this is just looking at it as a percentage.
Yeah, no, I would say the same thing because, because of those, you know, Walmart counted and also whatever.
Part of the issue, yeah.
Whether, but also the things that come in the sky.
So keep in mind, my budget is estimated based on actual and a percentage of actual. And the percentage of actual from year over year, this is, this is what I would call mildly conservative. Because to your point, if you were to lose a major sales taxpayer for one reason or another, 5% wouldn't be enough to make up the difference. You'd be, you'd be down more than that. But I think conservatively, if you're trying to estimate your operational cost and you're basing what you're gonna pay people and equipment and that kind of thing on, less conservative, you say, you know what? We've been averaging a 10% increase over the last six years. Let's say, take last year's number and add 10%. That's on the far end of, you know, that's, that's not conservative at all. So I think this is a reasonable number. I'm showing it to you in case you do have feedback and say, you know what? I wanna be a little less conservative. This is your budget. I just want to remind you, this is your policy document, it's your budget, and you can instruct me to whatever you want. And I want you to understand the pieces so that you can give me, you know, good policy advice. This is something that we will probably do going forward, is a part of our, our monthly updates to you on sales tax will, will include this information. So what you see in pink in this, in this area, or purple, or whatever color you wanna call that, those are the year-to-date actuals. So as we get actual payments, you'll see that the same, it's the same number all the way across that line. And the reason is because that is the actual collections. And what, what each of these columns represent is different ways to forecast your sales tax collections. So for instance, the first column is basically all your year-to-date actuals and then what that budgeted amount is. If, if we, if this is our budget and, and it makes up 9.4% of the total collections, then it'll be these actuals plus this number plus that number, and you get down to a total. So the takeaway is that your, I don't think I'm gonna switch. Yeah. Your estimated sales tax receipts for this year, by the end of September of this year, will be somewhere between this 1,000, 1,555,000 dollar number on the low end and 1,624,000 dollars on the high end. The high end is 15%. Again, the average right now is 20%. So it could be even a little bit higher than that. But I feel very confident that it's gonna be somewhere between those two. That we, we're not gonna get less than this number here. It's gonna be somewhere between that and that. Why is that good? Well, because as you can see, we only budgeted this. So we're gonna be, we're gonna have $250,000 or so that in excess funds that we're not planning for. And that's why the $200,000 issue with property tax is not an issue. I'm just frustrated myself because I, I wanna go back and look at my notes from last year and understand the calculus I did. What I suspect I did, frankly, is I probably took the returns from the year prior and then took the delta between the certified tax rate and then did simple math and said, okay, well, if we've got $60 million more of value and our M&amp;O rate is X, then that equals Y, dollar value, and that's what we're gonna get extra. And I, I didn't take a, I didn't go back and look at, okay, what was the final rate? And then what was that final amount and do that math? I, that's, that's the only thing I can, I can tell myself that makes sense. But yeah, either way, I'm gonna get to the bottom of it and we'll make sure we don't repeat that mistake this year.
But it's so much fun speculating.
Yeah. I'm sorry. So here's your collections again. There's your ad warrant. This is why we're not gonna, like I said, our, what's missing probably from this chart, and we made this about 10 minutes worth, the meeting started, is a, a, a final column that compares those to budget. Or maybe that first column compares it to budget, but your budget is a little over 1.4 million, and you're gonna bring in probably 1.4, like I said, 1,250,000. So there'll be a shortfall on, on the property taxes. I think, oh yeah. And then here's how we're gonna, you know, this is how we estimate them now. So you're gonna see a plugged-in number for estimated property taxes. And you'll also see it's much more conservative compared to the current year, again, because of that error. But what we're doing is we're just looking at, okay, they gave us a preliminary value. How close to that preliminary value were they in the last few years? And you can see preliminary certified value, for instance, in '18 was 175,567,000, and the final certified value was 171,694,000, or 644,000. So it was slightly less than what they had predicted. In the following year, '19, same story. Their preliminary value was slightly higher than the certified value. In 2020, it starts to flip a little bit. The preliminary value's 225 billion, I think, 226, and the final certified was like 224, so again, it's slightly less. But then look what happens in 2021. And that's probably when you got a lot of calls from people saying, hey, my taxes are too high because their preliminary was about, what is that, 40 or 40,000 or so?
Off.
You know, the, the certified value is 40,000, 40.
53.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah. 50,000, what did we say? 53.
This year.
Yeah, or million. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I keep saying thousand, I knew it was million. Because millions off. And then 2022, it turned out that they were really, really close, like 3 million off.
It's not that crystal ball.
Yeah, but it makes, again, when you're estimating, and when you don't have, at the time you're estimating, you don't have that number. You have that number, but you don't have this number.
Right.
It, it does make it challenging. The other thing that's throwing a big wrinkle into this is the legislative changes that have been happening and what they're doing with homestead exemptions and that kind of thing. Right now, currently, we aren't, there isn't an impact. The, the homestead exemptions for school districts, they're gonna have to deal with an additional, I think, 30 to 40,000 dollars per homestead that they'll have to, they'll have to figure out how to budget for. So this is what we're doing. We're kind of looking at these and then we're doing some math. And you'll see, again, at the end where we're, what the numbers we came up with. This is your expenditures versus actual. We're gonna go through a lot of slides here because we're just gonna go department by department and show you where you are. Next time you see this, you, there will be, I'll, I'll put percentages in here so that you can see percentage spent. I think that's just a good thing to be able to look at. But you can see, overall, we are, you always want your revenues to be slightly more, so that if you're, if you're halfway through the year, you want to have collected 60% if you can. You'll collect a little bit more than what you would expect. And the reverse is true on expenditures. You always wanna be a little less than halfway through on your expenditure side. And by and large, that's where we are. I think you will see them on the I think you will see them on the subsequent pictures. So there you go. City administration, we're at fifty-five percent expenditure on, in library at fifty-six. In police, we're at sixty-two. Again, we know we bought a lot of equipment out of the PD, so that's a big, big reason why that's up a little bit. This court, we're at fifty-six. This is exactly where we kinda hoped we would be on emergency management. We only budgeted six thousand, so it looks really out of kilter. But there is a, I think I told you, there's a, there's some expenditures we'll do there, so we'll probably catch up and then some by the end of the year there. On community development, you can see we're at sixty-two percent. Streets, we're right at fifty percent. Parks and Rec with seventy-one. Animal control at thirty-eight. RV park at a hundred and nineteen.
Yeah, what happened there?
Yeah. The, in the RV park? Oh, okay. So this would be the parks building that was purchased, but it's in RV park instead of in parks. So that probably just needs to be fixed.
The park building?
Yeah, the building that we built, the new, the new parks, the services building. It's animal control, services, it's all, well, apparently it got built to RV park, which is why it's sitting there. There you are, finance, seventy-nine percent. Swimming pool, twenty-four. And these, the, this isn't, you get a monthly report that shows you kind of where the major expenditures are. You get a full detail of general fund. I don't have that in here, but you can always go back and look at that to kind of better understand why are these numbers where they are at. I don't have that detailed here. So here we go, IT, we're at seventy-one, and then non-apartmental, forty-five. Here's your revenues. This is just looking at the enterprise funds, and there's only a couple of slides on this. There you are, fifty-three percent of actual versus adopted. Again, if you're slightly over fifty percent at this point in the year, that's good, because you generally make all your money in the summer. There you are, expenditures, again. Right where you'd expect to be around fifty, fifty-five percent. Sewer, we're only at thirty-seven. Electric, we're fifty-three. There are water and refuse. There's the airport revenues. Airports do very, very well. On revenue, we had a really, really good month, last month on fuel sales. There you are, expenditures. So here we're gonna get to the forecast. So this is, one of the things I wanted to point out was the property tax numbers, that one, one million two seventy-six. Here's your approved, one million four sixty-three. Like I said, I think that's off by about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we made up for that in the proposed. I did do the, basically, what, the way we got to this proposed number is, our M and O tax rate right now is sitting at about thirty-nine cents. And I took their preliminary estimate, and I multiplied it by ninety-five percent. So a little less than, you know, basically, they've been off by just a little bit. So I made them off by just a little bit, took the same rate, and I just plugged that number in as, as a target. We will refine that as we get better data from our tax books, at the county tax office. Municipal court, we kept flat for now. Again, these are some really not very precise numbers, which is not what I'm going into. Municipal court's a little bit behind on their collections, so I don't, my, my level of confidence in, in that number, that one eighty-seven, is not super high at this stage, but that, so that'll be something to probably change. The sales taxes, I feel very good about. Sales taxes, you can see, were less conservative than when we're this year, at one point two. But even over actual in twenty twenty-two, we're still under that. You see that? We're at one point, one, one million four seventy-two versus one million five seventy-three. So I feel good about the, the sales tax number, that it's a one, a conservative number, two, that, I mean, is probably a good one for our, but I did all, I'll check on a lot. There's our parks and rec. You can see that it is somewhat conservative. We're still, we've already just about, we haven't even opened the pool yet. One thing we have to think about next year, and Devin's been on top of it about this, is we've got the community center that's coming in. We have a new commu, community center that's coming into the pool, or at the park. We don't know how that's gonna impact our pool, because the intent is to demolish that building and build a new one. Well, if there's no building, you know, are we, are we gonna be able to keep the pool open? If we are, how? What are we gonna do to make that, make that happen? That's, that's a double-edged sword. I think I told you all, last year, we accidentally made money at the pool. We don't usually do that. But we, it actually ended up paying its own way, which is fantastic. I'm not, we're not guaranteeing we're gonna do that again this year. We'll see how this season kinda turns up, turns out. It has a lot to do with, the issue is, you have fixed operational costs and variable revenue. Because it just depends on who shows up that day, and how many people are paying, and, you know, how much they pay, and how many parties you have, et cetera. So it's really, it's, it's difficult to forecast and get real accuracy. But they, they are getting very strong revenues. We'll see how this season turns out. And as far as the forecast, we're gonna have a lot of conversation with Devin. And as we get closer, one of the items on the agenda tonight was approval of the, the RFP process for the, this community center building as part of the USDA, and what they require. Since we move forward on that project, we'll have a lot of dialogue about how is this gonna impact the pool? Can we do, can we possibly prevent it from impacting the pool? Because that would be our preference, obviously. And then you have other revenues, and we'll get into what those are as we get further into the budgeting process. So here's the concern, and here's kind of the takeaway. Right now, you have an actual budget of four point four in revenues. And, and your approved FY was three point eight. I've already said that's off by about two hundred and ten, so it's really like three, three million six would be the, what would've been the approved amount. Now granted, you've got sales taxes of an additional two hundred and fifty or so that's probably gonna come in. And our proposed revenues are three point four, as, as they stand right now. That's a concern, because as you look at the requested expenditures, the total on these is, the center proposed, which really requested, is four point, four, just a little over, four million one hundred and sixty-six thousand. So there's a pretty good-sized delta between the proposed, the requested expenditures and our, our, our revenues, our projected revenue. So obviously, that's a, that, that's where the sausage gets made when you're making, doing a budget. We've got a lot of work to do. I already know there's some really easy dollars to clean up. There's some things that we're just fat-fingered when we're putting in the, the budget numbers that we'll go back and get corrected. But I don't believe that there is, whether that be like six hundred and some odd thousand dollars, I don't think there's that amount. So what that, what that means is, this is gonna be a little bit of a, a challenging budget year. The other thing that makes this challenging, and talking to, you know, this isn't a CIP workshop, but it is impacted, is the city's projects and ability issued debt. Because our property tax is where it is, and, and the building boom is, is more or less slow to crawl, are, we may not be able to issue additional debt as we had planned.
So can you explain really quickly, we're going from, what I believe was a very conservative, it was fifty percent lower from actual twenty twenty-two to approved twenty twenty-three, but then we're dropping that down. Basically, it's a million dollars less than what we brought in twenty twenty-two. So where are those, you're expecting, and I know that you're doing this very cautiously, so I, I respect that. I'm just wondering, how does that decrease?
Well, so, this is a big one. See this other revenue, like one million thirty? That was the actual FY twenty twenty-two.
What did that include?
I have to go back and dice that again. So this was, these are ARPA funds? Yeah. So when we get our audit... Okay.
We should itemize that out.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But that's the big difference. I mean, there, there's eight hundred thousand dollars between that and that. There's only a little, I mean, really, the difference between the, the property taxes here is one, this is actually last, the net, the following year, and it's only off by, you know, forty thousand dollars, twenty-four to twenty-two, if you look at it that way. So that's not a big issue. And sales taxes, eh, they're off by a hundred thousand. You know, we're being conservative by a hundred thousand, I think about it that way. But, anyway.
So on the expenditures for twenty twenty-three proposed, there's two areas that have significant increase and change. What triggered that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just tell you, I've got a lot of work to do. I have not spent any time at all reviewing these numbers. I was really worried about, I, I really, well, the way I do budgeting, I first figure out how much money I have. First, I, we, we focus on the revenues. And so I spent a tremendous amount of time focusing on the revenues. The staff also missed their budgets. When they, when we sit down with them, that's when I'll delve into it, and we haven't done that yet. Normally, I say normally, last year, at this time last year, I'd already had the staff meetings. So I could actually give you a pretty good idea, and, and this was already cleaned up. So we probably shaved off a good five to ten percent, potentially. And that portion of the operational budget, I'd already kinda cleaned it up. I haven't done any of that now. I know, I mean, just, I'll, I'll point to one, just as, as an example, for instance. I know, like, this amount in the city administrator budget, there's, there's at least eight to, eight? To twenty, between eight and twenty-three thousand dollars in that number, that I know I'm probably gonna make go away the next time I look at it. Because I know one of it was miscalculated. It's supposed, it's, it's a, it's a cost item, it's supposed to be split between us and enterprise. And it just didn't get done, because there's a million tables, and just a small, those types of mistakes are very common. And we go through and clean it up, clean it up, and we review it and clean it up. So that needs to be cleaned up. And then there was another item in there that...
Animal control?
Was done. Animal control is different, because, keep in mind, well, that's actually why animal control, I think...
Just on the next one.
I put CC on there. You won't know what that means, but that means code compliance. So animal services now comprises animal services and code compliance. So the cost, so if you go back and look at the, yeah, where is it? Community, community, yeah, community development, you see how they're down by twenty-three percent? Or sixty-one thousand dollars? If you go to the next one and look at animal, I love this, I'm using this too much probably.
It might be nice to be switched up.
You see how that's included, included up to seventy-seven? That's, that's where the lion's share of that is, is from moving code compliance into animal. And so I, so we probably need to, like, one of the things I'm probably gonna change is, that animal services budget may switch to, either we'll call it animal services and code compliance, or I may call it community services. I'm not sure. But, anyway, that's why there's a difference there. So there are a lot of things we still have to go through. I am concerned, we're in the process. The other thing that, this Friday, we'll be meeting with a consultant to talk about salary survey, salary survey, and, and looking at total compensation within the city, and look at how we compare. We've been able to do, you know, and I just, thank you, council. We've been able to make some adjustments in the past years, what, past couple of years, where everybody was hit with a pretty considerable inflation. Last budget year, you agreed to a six and three, so six percent for all employees that are making less than sixty-five thousand dollars, and three percent for all other employees. This year, I would love to do something similar, certainly for, for those under sixty-five again, but we're gonna see what the budget allows. And in concert with that, I wanna at least be able, from a policy standpoint, show and tell you all how we compare to surround, to what we believe is our, our market area for attracting employees and surrounding cities. And where, how our total compensation compares by position. So that's something that's being undertaken right now. By the time we get through the budget, it will be something that's gonna be wrapped up with the budget presented to you as a report, so that you can take that into account when you're talking about the budget and what you want to be your plan. I think that concludes. Leroy, do you have anything else to add?
On the next chart of the June thirteenth meeting?
Yes.
Will you have completed your departmental reviews by then?
Yeah, we're doing those next, next week. So we'll have that, that work done and fairly well cleaned up. The requested budget review will be pretty far along. The big issue is, again, the, keep in mind, like, eighty-five percent of your cost is personnel cost. So baked into the budget right now is a six and three? It's a six and three. I'm not, I'm not advertising that to employees at this stage, because, yeah, we, we plug something in to give us an idea, but...
Scott, we're gonna...
We've got a lot of work to do.
We gotta work on that July twenty-fifth meeting, because I'm not even sure that we'll have more than...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's the week I leave. I'm here that Tuesday, but I leave that Friday. That's, when are y'all going to Alstair's? I know, when do you leave, though?
Uh, right after our short, well, he leaves right before that, I leave the week before.
You're leaving a week before?
Fifteen, I think it is.
Well, the good news is, you're the mayor, and you and the council can call and cancel meetings at your pleasure, council.
We'll, we'll work on this, we'll work on the, the timing.
Yeah. I think we'll be ready, you know, yeah, I think we'll be, we could push that one, potentially. I've got, the thing, the, the problem we, problems we get into, generally speaking, is making sure that we have enough time to do all the things you have to do statutorily. But generally speaking, I'll, I'll go back and ask Leroy, but I believe that this could happen in conjunction with a meeting in August. It doesn't have to happen here. We will have made a lot of progress in the, the work sessions two and three. So four, you may either cancel altogether, or you may just decide to do it on the night of one of your public hearings, where you have the work session, and then public hearing, and then whatever. And we could do that, too.
Okay.
As Deborah is furiously flipping through her calendar.
We'll, we'll get to those dates.
We just have to do the third day. Your budget comes to me, and then we have to do it. I think I have it kinda canceled in on my desk calendar when y'all are both gone, but I don't...
Uh, if everybody can, for everything that you know that you're gonna be out this summer, just send that to Deborah, so that she can coordinate that, if you're gonna be out at all.
Okay. Do you have a presentation you're gonna do?
Yeah, I emailed you a link to it. Can I just bring that up?
I'll, I'll pull it up.
And you just, you wanna toss it?
I will. I'm probably not gonna toss it, but I'll hand it to you.
Hand it over.
Sorry, I just, I'm just, I've got, like, I don't know, thirty unread emails, but your, the opt-out does not exist. We can cover that in a second. So sorry, we couldn't find HTTPS, capital of SharePoint dot com sites, blah, blah, blah. Is it possible it got moved? But if I go to your SharePoint, then I, I should be able to see it there, right?
It's on the, yeah, it's on the SharePoint.
Yeah, so we'll just do that.
Under city council meeting agendas, and this one's actually accidentally saved in twenty twenty-two mayor reports. I know. Did it save in there?
I'm gonna plug this in, and you can tell me when I'm next, you can see it.
Here, let me try this. It's, it's coming up. There, it's coming up. Okay, you found it?
Yeah. Is that it?
Perfect. Nope. That's not it.
No, that's not it. It said May, May ninth?
Oh, you found May ninth? No, this is May twenty-third.
Okay, there's 2022 mayor, mayor reports.
Here, just, you wanna just give me the thing called.
059?
No, that's why, that's why I pulled up, but that's not it.
Okay, I do have transcript on, so it's gonna be a little bit weird. All right, so today we're gonna talk about a few things. Parade of Homes, I'm gonna do a, a brief on the Riverbuck Bluff Power and the AMI. We're gonna have, go into a little bit more detail next time. We'll talk a little bit about the council planning workshop and about the upcoming historic Highway 90 Bridge project. So Parade of Homes is in Casterville. If anybody wants to find out details or find tickets or any of that, it is sabuilders.com/p parade-of-homes. They're the feature builders. They've got some very nice fancy homes. We got a chance to, to walk through there. Where did we go to that? That was on.
Friday night.
Friday night, thank you. Gorgeous homes, really neat interior features.
They even rented, like, like, all the vehicles that were parked in the parking lot, in the driveways, were all rented to show that the homes are ready to go for buy.
Oh, yeah, I like the, the UTVs that were in the driveways already just planted from it, ready to go. There are opportunities to go if you haven't already gotten tickets. Here's the upcoming schedule. So tomorrow is Realtor Day from 11:00 to 2:00. It's open to the public from 3:00 to 7:00. Thursday, open from 3:00 to 7:00. When is the chamber night? I didn't put that on there. I think that's on. It's on Thursday.
It's Thursday. It's the same time as our.
Four to seven, okay. And, oh, that's right, because it says 3:00 to 7:00. So four to seven, you can get your tickets from the chamber. I think those are $15 each. Friday, open to the public from 3:00 to 6:00. There's date night, and there's details on the site about what, who was involved with that. That's from 6:00 to 9:00. What a date night is? That's when you take your date and. You can do that, if you wanted to do it for a date. It's open to the public 10:00 to 6:00 on Saturday, 12:00 to 6:00 on Sunday, and then on Memorial Day from 10:00 to 6:00.
Just a caveat on that, because some of the people were, before you go in there for the Parade of Homes, that live on the outside, people did parking on their yards and everything, and it's a little frustrating for them. So just make sure you're not parking people's yards or block their driveways and the common courtesy stuff.
Right.
People are parking in people's yards, residences, and.
In their yards.
How are they getting there? Are we in sidewalks?
No, no, the people that live on, I think it's the Bex. Is that their last name? Yeah, and there's the driveway. They're, yeah, they're, yeah, and they're parking in their yard and blocking their driveways.
And they aren't charging for parking, so I mean.
And they have their pre-designated parking.
Yeah, they've, I think they've leased the church parking lot, and they will, they will bus you or they'll take you a golf cart from your parking to the thing. So there's really no reason to try and park in the neighborhood.
But, but it's being done because they're, they're writing signs in store and telling me all about it.
Yes.
To put signs up there, so just.
Let's, let's contact them and see if they can help with that. Thank you. All right, next, we have ongoing projects. And this didn't quite work the way that I meant it to, but, so Riverbuck Bluff Power, just a reminder, this is fixing all the aged power lines. The design is for increased resiliency, for fewer outages and smaller impact. It's a long overdue thing. We will end up needing to do this in country village soon enough. This is gonna be a great opportunity for us to practice our, our new skills at communication and looking forward to this. It's a very long project. It will be painful, but we will try and reduce the pain as much as possible. I think that staff has, has shown their ability to learn from that and grow from that. And so I'm, I'm very confident in their ability to continue to do that. With the AMI, AMI is the Automatic Meter Reading System, and that will be on water, gas, and power. Again, we'll have some more details about what that timeline looks like. It's a fairly extensive project. The reason that we're doing that, it reduces water loss because you pay only for what you're using. Right now with, what did we say? It was 60% of our meters are passed into, significantly passed into life. And so those will always, when they fail, they fail to the, to the detriment of the general public because they're not reading enough. So what's happening is that we're taking the losses, the stuff that people are using that have the failed meters, and we're spreading the cost across the entire rest of the city. So now it, you'll be paying for exactly what you use and not what your neighbor's using. The long-term operational savings, if you look at, like, right now with our meter reader out, and the, each one of the departments is kicking in people to go out and help out with that. So especially as we are looking at Elsace and Oaks doubling the number of meters that we have, not adding additional staff, not adding potential additional burden to our existing staff. It's a great way to scale the services of the city without scaling the staff. Makes us more efficient and makes our money go further. It's consistent and accurate readings. If you notice, sometimes if it's read at a different time of the month, I've noticed that, like, one month it'll be really, really big, and the next month, little, little, little. And a lot of times it'll be because the, the, just, it doesn't happen often, but when it does, I think there's, there's times when we'll see them at different times of the month. So this is consistent and accurate. It'll be read at the same time because it'll be continuously reading. And then leak detection. If you look at what's happened, it takes us sometimes, I got a call from, from Patricia before I was on council, just, she does this regularly. When she sees an anomalous bill, she'll call people and say, hey, I think you've got something wrong. But it's four weeks, six weeks from when it could have actually happened. And with this, we can get alerts right away if it's reading that there, there could be a leak because there's ongoing water usage. So I think that that's a great benefit, especially if anybody's had to live through the cost of having to pay for the water with that one, I think it was 65,000 gallons. It would have been really nice to catch that earlier.
Exactly.
Can you go, can you go back up real quick?
Yep.
So just to touch on this, we did have a, a concern from a citizen. I mentioned it to Paul Carey, the citizen was in his district, and then to the mayor, just for situational awareness. The concern, I, I don't know their, their personal life issues or anything else, but the concern had to do with the, the AMI technology is an RF, it's a radio frequency technology. And I believe they were concerned about those radio frequencies, that they would somehow present some type of harm to the family. So there's a couple of things. Number one. Yeah, we have, there is a link that, you know, is on the website for census that I can send you all if you have, other people have similar concerns. There is, the FCC has, has graded and rated these things. They present no more danger to us than anything else that we're currently operating, whether it's your cell phone or your microwave. I'm not a scientist, so I can't say that those things aren't dangerous to us. In fact, we, we know that some people are concerned about it. But the fact of the matter is, they meet all the safety guidelines the FCC offers, and the radio frequency typically is not something that has been, I mean, radio frequency's been, been around for a very long time. That's not typically something that people associate with those types of harms. So that, and the other thing that's also helpful is the fact that this is not something you're holding up to your head, it's not something that's inside your house. It's way out at the curb or wherever your meter is, and it's underground, and it's transmitting from, from that location.
And I don't believe these meters have batteries in them.
I think it is.
They do. I was thinking that it was like a radiator method of communication, but that's fine.
Yeah, I think they have to have some kind of power in order to be able to, to get it, the signal up there. But, so that's number one. Number two is the concern was, well, I just want to opt out. Well, unfortunately, the city does not have a policy for opting out. These are, these meters are considerably old. We've signed a contract that says we are going to replace them. That contract requires them to replace them. And part of how that contract gets paid for is in both the savings, the, the operational savings and the, the recuperating the actual usage, which is something that hasn't been happening historically. So there is no opt-out provision at this time. That's certainly something council can consider at some point in the future, but it wouldn't be something that staff would recommend.
Thank you. I lost my title page. I'm gonna move on past that. City council, I'm gonna come back to that one. So city council strategic workshop we had last week. Why do we do this? Kind of multifaceted. We're trying to create a common understanding of what we're working to accomplish and to gain the, the tools that we need to discuss items, decide on the best outcome, and actually go through the implementation process. It was a really interesting learning experience. I think that one thing that, that our facilitator, Mike Conde, brought up was, when you look at any time somebody is doing something, whether it's our police force or athletes or anybody, practice makes perfect. I think it was Muhammad Ali that said that his, that his, his performance was completely. I don't, it was some great inspirational quote that I can't remember, but it all happens in the practice ring, not in the actual ring. And the, the kind of interesting and sometimes unfortunate thing is that you don't have to be qualified for these positions, you're elected into these positions. And so we need to make sure that we are developing those schools, the, the skills to properly look at things and understand things and have this commonality of, even if we have a difference of opinion on how to get there, this commonality of ultimate vision, where do we want to get? Make sure that we're all going in the same direction, and then all we have to do is decide the best way to get there. So I feel like I learned a lot about my, my fellow council people in going through this. There were some really interesting learnings about some of our behaviors and how some of them were more common or more shared than we realized. Some of them were more different than we realized, and it was just a really good time for better understanding. And ultimately, this is also to develop the tools to help us better direct staff. Staff is here to implement the, the strategies that city council puts together based upon the input of the people that we represent. So this is really just kind of helping us through this. At the end of this, so I put up the new vision and mission. They're not dramatically different from what they were from the last iteration that we went through, and not terribly different from what we had dealt with in the past. So the vision is Casterville is a safe, friendly, and historically unique community where strong traditions and identity thrive. And the mission of this council is to preserve Casterville's rich culture, historic architecture, local resources, and natural environment through carefully guided growth, so friends and family at all ages of life can enjoy our community, steeped in a pioneering spirit and camaraderie. So if you wonder why we're doing these things, this is, this is what we believe our mission is to be. I know that this is the, the mayor's report. Was there anything that I missed from the, the workshop that anybody else wanted to call out specifically? I think it was really good.
I just want to thank you all for your time. You dedicated two full days to, to doing a workshop, and a lot of it, as you, as we learned, as we went through it, was repetit, you know, it was repetitive of what we did with Ron Cox. Now, they are two totally different facilitators, and Ron's a great guy. I would use him anytime, but I really like Mike. I think that he has a level of sophistication and professionalism that is uncommon. And so I think we really benefited by being able to use his, utilize his expertise. But I just want to say thank you for what you're doing. This is not, it's not fun. It's not all, you know, it's not all grins and giggles. It takes a lot of effort and a lot of work and a lot of dedication. The fact that you're all there working together, it means a lot to me. It means a lot to me personally that you're dedicated to your craft because that's what you, I mean, that's what you're doing. You're, you're serving your, your folks and, or the people. And I think that the best way that you can do that is by dedicating the time to learn good governance. And anyways, I just can't thank you enough. It was really, really good.
Thank you. Last item is the historic 90, Highway 90 Bridge Grant Project. So we have, I showed these last times. These are a couple of the pictures. If you look at this, you're looking at it basically from around the, the, kind of, by where the Steinbach House is, a little bit closer to maybe where the barn is. And you can see the juxtaposition to the dam down below. That was the original one. This is a drawing that actually came from when they were gonna tear it down. And this came from a drawing that was in the Express News back in 1940, I think it was, when they tore it down. Another view of it. It's really interesting how you see that the foliage has changed quite a bit. That's something we'll be addressing in the upcoming one because some of the, the foliage that has grown up is gonna have to be removed. And that will be. Yeah, there's a big bridge behind it, too. It's a little bit higher, for sure. And.
This one?
It does, it's not hooked up to this one.
The next one? No.
That one?
Nope, the other way, there.
Yeah, there's a person fishing down the river. Yeah, there is a, in fact, I found another reference to it somewhere else. There used to be a, a footbridge.
Yeah.
That went across the river. And it's on, right now, that footbridge connects to private property, so it's not something that we're looking at reinstated.
Well, it was a little bitty footbridge.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
It was feet wide.
Yes.
I'm just hoping we can find some of those hats.
No.
Those are nice.
No.
Okay, so we're gonna have an open house to discuss this. Tech dot was very excited about this. We did find out that there were some misunderstandings about what we were trying to do. Somebody thought that, that Tech Dot was forcing us to do this. And this is actually something that they're supporting us in, in recreating the old Highway 90 Bridge as a way to, well, we'll talk about that in a second. But we're gonna talk about, like, the more details we'll have, some of the, the things that we have here, some of the other documents that we're putting together for the actual grant. That will be this Thursday. It'll be from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. We wanted to do it a little bit later for better inclusion, but the Landmark Inn has their annual meeting from 6:00 to.
6:30 to 9:00.
6:30 to 9:00. So if anybody wants to go by and see what.
It is this Thursday. This Thursday is May 25th, but it's this Thursday.
This Thursday, May 25th.
Yes.
I am messing up my dates all over the place. Not the 27th, as it states on here, but the 25th.
But also, I have put up a, a possible form for y'all.
Great.
I posted it on Friday, so you're clear, even though.
And you showed it was starting at 4:00?
I didn't know what time at the time, so.
Now, Holden, I like your 4:00 better than his 5:00.
Well, at the time when I put it up, I wasn't sure. Y'all can gather at 4:00 if you want to, because from that point on, you're, and I didn't put a stop.
And we have some banners up. There's one in September Square, the other one is over at Steinbach House, correct? So you can see those there. It's like a bird, it's color, it says Open House on it. It's a little bit much to read as you run by.
That's what the open house line was.
That's what it was, yeah. It was not clear enough. And where is it gonna be? It's gonna be at the Landmark Inn. So we'll talk about it. We'll actually look through where that's gonna be. We'll have some visualizations on some boards that people can take. We had looked at doing that, but we had two options, and, and I had actually made that recommendation. Scott's like, no, we can't wait, wait, no.
Well, I figured out how to do it, though.
Yeah, I figured out how to do it.
I'd get filled.
We're not gonna do it.
Just walk across the road.
Yeah, that's what.
That'll, that'll shoot an arrow across.
I had a visual, a visualization of Monty Python.
That's a free Saturday. Okay, so this one, wait.
There's a rock on it?
This is where. Okay, so I had the white and the white, I just moved the, we had user error all over this thing. That was me. So what are we doing? It is rebuilding the old highway, the 1904 Highway 90 Bridge as a walking, biking, and micro modal path. This does not mean cars. This means to one of my neighbors who rides a scooter all the way from, by the regional park, all the way over to the Walmart, he doesn't have to frogger across in that little tiny walkway space there. So there's a lot of people that like to, to. little tiny walkway space there. So, there's a lot of people that like to, to walk, to ride their bikes, and this is just a better way for local people to get to local places. Starting to connect other areas as we grow to the east, making sure that they can get back to the resources that we have in historic Castleville without having to get in their cars, the football traffic, onto the highway. And, so, we will continue to look at doing things like this. This, what, it follows, the recommendation is that it follows the original abutments from the Steinbach House to the Landmark Inn, and there'll be more details there. So, why? This is a part of our long-term strategy to provide pedestrian access across the river and across the highway. This is the first step in doing that. We have many more steps to do that, just to create that better interconnectivity without having that ultimate complete dependence on cars. A better way of life for the many people who appreciate the outdoors, and it honors the history of Castleville. This is something that, I think, does a great job of looking back at what has been in our past that we want in our future. It's gonna be here. Hopefully. We still have to work through that. There's a lot of details. And one of the biggest things with this is, it is, the grant money, it's a substantial amount of money. Tech Dot has millions of dollars of grants that are available. This is probably a five to six million dollar project. It's fairly substantial. The competition for it is gonna be high, so there's not even a guarantee that we actually get this, but it really depends on the community support for it. And so, please, let people know that it's going on. We're putting out as much information as we can, so that people can buy and take a look at it. Counselor back.
When we talked about this, it was acknowledged that there was a risk to the city, because if the project goes according to budget, the risk is minimized. But if the project goes like every other project that we've done in the last two years, there's probably gonna be an overrun, and we have to pay the overrun. So, I wanna focus somewhere along the line on identifying how much overrun set aside we should put in the budget, where we're gonna get it, and how we're gonna guarantee that it gets preserved until after we know whether there's an overrun.
And even better, build that into our submission, because they do have a certain amount of overruns that we can include with that.
And I would say that's actually what we're trying to do now. We have to be very careful. I mean, it's gonna go through Tech Dot, that, they, you can put a certain amount of fluff in. I mean, it is Tech Dot, but you, but it's only so much. So, what we're trying to do is put forward what is a realistic option for a bridge, that with realistic appurtenances and engineering and other things that would be required, whether it's retaining walls, that kind of thing, but trying to maximize those within limits, right? So, we're allowed to apply for up to five million dollars. Of that, the city will have to match 20%, so it's a million dollars, and it's a reimbursement grant, which means that we spend the money and then they reimburse us. So, that's another part to remember. It's a lot of money, a lot of cash that's gonna have to be spent. But what, what Quiddity is doing is trying to get as close to that five million dollars to give us as much room as possible within the design process, because right now, it's all, it's all fudge factor anyway. We're just kinda estimating, but we're trying to be on the higher side of the estimating, staying below the five million, but not getting so low that, to Herb's point, we won't have enough money if there are overruns. So, yes.
Great.
Good thing to be concerned about.
Next item is Public Hearing on Amendment of the City of Castleville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 106. That is Traffic Engineering, Article 4, Parking to Prohibit Parking on Tondre Drive. Oh, what's that? Oh, the public, sorry. We're opening the public hearing at 7:15.
This is an item we'll talk about, if we're able to elaborate just a second, for the benefit of people here. The public hearing is required for our process to change our laws that regulate--
Traffic?
That's why we have to have this public hearing, because that's what's required. And what we're looking at is, Tondre Drive has been a private drive for a substantial part, period of time since that Walmart development took place. It was always intended to become a public drive, and now that it is a, since, while it was a private drive, we had tons of trucks parking there, that kind of thing. They weren't regulated. Now that it'll be a public drive, you know, the expressed desire of the council is to start regulating that. So, again, this isn't deliberation period. This is for anybody listening. If you have any comments or concerns, that's what the public hearing is about.
Anybody wanna comment from the public?
Arnie Delassey, 109 Riverbuck, just as a comment, when the signs have been out there lately, showing no parking, they've all been on the east side of the street, and I've had people ask me if that's the only side that's gonna be non-parking, versus the east and the west sides of the streets, since there's no signs on the west side. So, just to throw that out there as a comment. I've gotten from probably a half a dozen, 10 people or something.
Thanks, Arnie. All right, anybody else? We'll close then the public hearing at 7:17. Next item is Discussion and Appropriate Action on Adopting an Ordinance Amending the City of Castleville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 106, Traffic Engineering, Article 4, Parking to Prohibit Parking on Tondre Drive.
So, for this, Brianna, are you prepared to speak? You waited here all night. You might as well. There's a couple, this item, this item and another item that she may speak to. But you wanna kind of speak to why this was, kind of why we wrote it the way we did, and what it actually provides for. I'll, I'll speak before you do, just to Arnie's comment. It's kinda like chasing ants or something else. I mean, they were all, they were almost parking exclusively on the east side. We put the signs up, intending that to apply to the whole street. That's what it says. It doesn't, it doesn't say you can park, not park just here. You can't park anywhere here. And of course, you have people to the west side. So, we'll be chasing them in a circle for a little bit, but the intention is for there to be no parking allowed, east or west.
All right. Good evening, council. So, yeah, I just brought this to planning and zoning. Mr. Carey was there last week, and this was because, I'm sure y'all have seen all the big rigs parking along Tondre Drive. Sometimes, I think the picture I had, there was eight of them there, which is a lot of big rigs. And so, of course, for the police to be able to do anything about it, it has to be stated in our ordinances, so they can cite them. And so, that's why we're here. I brought a lot of revisions to planning and zoning, but they decided to keep it as simple as possible. And so, under no parking exceptions, they just added on Tondre Drive, because they just don't think that any parking should be allowed there. If people need to park, they always have the Walmart parking lot. So, that's why we're here.
There, those other revisions, I know staff, we had some discussion about it. I know that you, Brianna, very early on, circled, circulated input to the PD, to myself, to others among staff, about, well, what should we try and do? And I believe we asked council as well, you know, do you want this to be a parking ordinance that applies to broader, to the entire city? Do you want to just prohibit truck parking everywhere, that kind of thing? And ultimately, what you heard Brianna just reference is, the PNC said, "No, we just wanna keep it just to Tondre Drive for now." But that is something that, as we grow, and we have suffered from growing pains, you probably wanna consider and think about is, what, what kind of trucking, truck parking ordinance do you want to put in place? And the other thing we have to think about, Cindy, is that fantastic Father's Knows Best legislature that we have right now, and their preemptive, their super preemptive bill that they're, that they're pretty much have passed, that may play a role here as well. It may prohibit us from further restricting, or maybe even undo these types of restrictions.
I do believe that the PNC members were worried about wasting time modifying that ordinance at this time, knowing that we were looking at some major undertakings in the near future.
Yeah, and both are undertakings. And again, I think the thing that we all have to be thinking about, it's talking about wasting time, is whether or not what we're doing is to be undone by the proposed legislature. Now, I know that even if that bill is successful, that there's going to be a considerable appeal process by many of the cities in Texas, the ones that can afford to appeal that, through the state.
We open, then, no questions?
Yeah.
So, basically, the modification is just adding under, what is this?
I believe it's 107--
106 dash 107, see?
Yes, that's correct. And it's just on Tondre Drive, at the very end of that paragraph.
It just adds it to the list of other places that it is--
That's correct.
I believe that we amend the ordinance for the City of Castleville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 106, Traffic Engineering, Article 5, Parking to Prohibit Parking on Tondre Drive.
And I'll second.
Any further discussion?
One question, will Tondre Drive ever go across 90 and south?
The way that they currently have it shown, no. That will not be a major thoroughfare.
Yeah, I think Tech Dot is looking at making it left only, and at that light, do some other things, and pushing the cross traffic further up, further east.
I don't even think you're gonna be able to get across at 471 Old Beale Station Oak Parkway.
Yep.
You'll have to take a right, go up, turn around.
If they did have to cross it with some other, their south of 90, they could get under lane or--
No, I don't think they're gonna take it across or 102. I think the road that's gonna come across, from discussions we've had, is country lane. That's where they're gonna take it across.
Now, Tech Dot allows to have another cross.
Yeah.
I think there might be enough.
Great. Any further questions or discussion?
I guess my question is just, I don't recall this coming before when I was watching, but what's the, I guess, what's the harm of the trucks there, or what is the source of the complaints? Is it just that they're unsightly?
And also, they, they create wear and tear to the road that you really don't want there. And then, it does bring in savory things to town.
Could you elaborate on that?
No, I don't want to. But, it does. We've heard of stories that, unsavory--
Reptiles.
Things happening over there. And so, you just don't want that kind of stuff right there. Yeah.
And the damage to the roads is, if you think about, normally, you've got a tractor-trailer that's on, that's already on, what is that, eight wheels? And now, you're putting it all on a point load, because they'll drop it right there on a single piece, and so the damage to the road could be fairly substantial.
And it's also a safety issue, because right now, Tondre Drive is gonna be the main thoroughfare again to Alstation Oaks until they connect at 90, at Alstation Oaks Parkway. And you don't want a whole bunch of 18-wheelers parking there when there's families trying to come through there. You know, that's just not, it's, it's kind of a safety hazard. If the guys are getting off of their trucks, walking across the street, if there's a lot of people coming and going, it could be a safety hazard.
And isn't that area, that back corner, where we have our proposed acreage?
Yes.
That's correct.
So, that would hinder--
Public works.
Public works.
Mm-hmm.
Because of blocking, blocking possibly.
There's not gonna be, it's not gonna be public works there. That's, that's a different space that hasn't--
But still, whenever we use it, it could become a--
Yeah, absolutely.
Across the board, you really don't wanna have a truck. It's basically a truck stop in the middle of the road.
Yeah, they're only hiding there, and that's just not healthy.
And you have a really big Walmart parking lot.
Yeah.
Are they allowed to park in the Walmart parking lot?
It's a private, that's up to Walmart. That's a private space. They can allow it or not allow it.
Walmart, that's held and parked.
Yeah.
But that, so, they won't let their Uber trucks park there. But if you go, again, in Santa Monica, you'll see some of these areas where you, you have trucks that park along here in retail areas and everything, but it really is, it does cost a lot of--
There's that Home Depot right by 410 that has that issue, where any, doesn't matter what day of the week you go, there's a line of trucks up and down that, that road there.
Yeah, you don't, they don't, they don't, they don't, same thing.
And then, I'm sure it hinders Walmart with, because that's where their trucks go down to, for receiving and picking up stuff. So, getting in and out can be tricky. Now, how soon would this go into effect? Because we're coming up on the holiday weekend.
I think it goes into effect immediately.
It has to be published immediately.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, what's the time period?
Um--
How often is our newspaper published?
Thursdays.
So, I get it to--
It'll be next week, yes.
If the newspaper is published next week, that's what I'm saying.
So, we will be--
I can't say I was--
Let's just say, we've got, we've got temporary signs out there now. We're already talking to them, to the trucks that are there, and basically letting them know, hey, there's an ordinance in process. You really need to not park your--
And to be fair to Brianna, the ordinance is effective immediately, and I think that's, that's the question she was asking. The question Deborah and I were answering is, when do you start setting that?
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Brianna.
Next one. Okay, so, Discussion and Appropriate Action on Authorizing the City Administrator to Request Proposals for Qualified Planning Consultants to Prepare a Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO. This is Scott again.
Yeah, so, Brianna's also prepared to talk to this to some extent. We, since she pretty much drafted the whole thing. But, this is, this is what we talked about at the last meeting. No change has been made. I've already heard of a couple of recommendations from some of you, so you may wanna talk through those. But the intent is, to whatever the decision is tonight, if you approve the RFP with whatever changes you may consider, that we would issue that posthaste and start that process.
I don't, yeah. Well, I don't know if you have any questions, or, but we're here to, staff is here to answer questions.
When I looked at this, so, everybody got a chance to read over the proposed RFP? There were a few things on here. First of all, I've gotta say, great job. I think that you've really captured a lot of the things that we've been talking about, what gets included with it. So, the items, I had sent this over to Scott, and I said, "Understand, these are nitpicky items. They're just details, but overall, just a wonderful job on that." No problem. Thank you. So, I think that we should include some subcomponents in here, in terms of things that they should be looking at, in terms of the actual scope of it. And that would be the landscaping requirements, specifically talking about dealing with street trees and trees around the roadways and parking lots and retail spaces, commercial spaces. So, landscape requirements, making sure that we've got the lighting standards in there as well. So, what exactly that lighting standard, part of that would be like the Dark Skies Initiative, and the other items with that, whether we're doing pathway lighting or street lighting. And then, requirements in common spaces, including wetlands and stormwater areas. So, beyond the, just the, our traditional parkland spaces, it would be how they can use the common spaces, how we would like them to use the common spaces. There's a lot, especially the northeast corner, there's a lot of, well, actually, I think it's pretty much all of them that we've looked at, whether it's on the south side of Highway 90 with a lot of the flat land there, or the north side of Highway 90 where there's a lot of drainage areas, drainage ways. We can do that well or not so well. So, I think we'd be great to keep those. I think that it might be a good idea to, to call out a preference on a form-based code. I think that would be appropriate. And then, and I think that was it. I had, I had a couple of other recommendations, but they're more tactical. Did anybody else have any comments on the RFP, the scope? And this is really the biggest thing that we're talking about right now, is the scope, what is included with this, or any other elements. Counselor back?
I'm okay with what the, as it's defined, but I'm not okay with the fact that it says the cost to be determined. And I'm, in the past, I've expressed my concern that we're embarking on a very big project, a multi-year project, and we haven't the faintest idea what it's gonna cost. And I'm, I'm opposed to this. I'm opposed to starting before we set a calendar and set a budget and have some way to measure our success against that plan. That's all I want to say.
Absolutely valid point, and we have discussed this. I think this was included in here, the next steps. This is not approving the project itself. This is approving, releasing the RFP, and we have some estimates of about where that would be, depending on the scope and what they come back with. What I've seen from other cities has been anywhere from three to $400,000. Scott thinks that it's gonna be closer to the lower end of that, based on the scope that we've got, and some of the items that we're pulling out for, for grant funding on transportation and thoroughfare planning. So, this, the first step is just getting it out there, so we can get an idea for what it's actually gonna cost. We can't, we can only, the estimations that we've already gotten are as close as we can get until we actually put an RFP out.
And we're not obligated to choose anyone to respond?
Correct. This is not approving the project. This is approving, going out and getting the bids on the project, the scope on the project, and seeing if it's something the council, it would then come back as a separate item. It would have to be approved, based on the budget, based on the scope, based on the impact that we really, that we have.
It's something we have to do.
Counselor key?
And this doesn't fall under the professional services program?
Chairman?
So the city, in this case, invests in that proposal, so Andrew, you're perfectly direct, if you're not required to bid, this could, you could do your kind, but it's a smart idea.
No, no, I guess I'm thinking, is this, do we expect, like, for instance, engineering firms to respond to this? Because then they couldn't, they can't provide, you get to select them on a basis of qualification and then negotiate with, like, surveyors, engineers, architects. So is this, does this active service fall under the professional services program?
It might as well be, yes.
So you couldn't ask for a rule of this, based on the state law?
So you're going to, you're going to go through, you know, this election process for professional services?
Yeah.
And I think that was outlined in this already, said basically, if we can't negotiate a price with the first choice, then we go to the second choice. So it's already considered that.
Right, but we can't ask for a possible?
No, 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 no.
That'll frustrate you further, Herb. You live and die by these rules. What's that?
That's, that's good. That was not-
Yeah, well, in my, it's been, admittedly, it's been a while since I took one of these out to bid, and so my pricing may be outdated, but my recollection was that with the proposals, there was many times an estimated fee, like an estimate of the amount of hours that required, a fee schedule of here's what our professionals make, et cetera. So you'd see their table and who they were and what their hourly rates were. But we can't require it.
Yeah, if you, by state law, all professional services, you can't ask for a rest of the hour, but you can't ask for it.
I know you can't ask for it.
Yeah, you can't ask for it. And you can't even, you can't, can't accept it. You can't ask for it. They can't provide it against, it would be against state law for them to provide it. They would be-
You can't make a determination based on price.
Huh.
So, and so there's two parties to that, the engineers, architects, or whoever the profession is. The mall employers, if they provide it, they're in an ethics problem with their boards.
I think I've seen a lot of ethical violations in my tenure. I'm just going to say that. But it is what it is.
But this is a professional service.
We'll see what we get. We're going to send out an RFP. We'll see what we get back. They may or may not include pricing.
Well, no, I'm saying, if it would be, we would be in violation of state law.
So you're saying that the cost of that proposal is part of the submitted package? So, and that wasn't a lot of them, so, I mean, I need to just pull this out of some place. I want an acreage, probably ten others.
All in Texas.
Proposal, all pathways. That was all part of it.
It may be, again, this is really for our legal counsel, if this is considered a perfect, because the state defines what a perfect service is.
I know. I'm just telling you, in my experience, you can't make the, the way it's been explained to me in the past, is you can't make a decision based on price because it's not a, I hear what you're saying. I'm just telling you what my experience has been. You couldn't make the decision based on price, but it seems like-
If you didn't ask for it, you put in a separate, I don't think you might have a question if they are selected. I mean, this, and again, this is a legal counsel tells us. But I have been in situations where-
The designation, right?
This would be in violation, leave, the city would be in violation of the city's proposal.
We will ensure that it meets the legal requirement. Cindy will verify it. You don't have to do that on the spot right now. But we'll, we'll ensure that it falls for the procurement laws. Yeah. But to your point, we will not require something that is legally not, not, that cannot be done legally. I will make sure that procurement law is followable for it unless Cindy, and she'll tell us, yes, included, gay verily or nay verily, as she likes to say.
Typically, what you do is you get a call from an attorney who represents one of the associations that do this. But I think if we approve this, we can say that the, the section under hospital policy will be in accordance with state law.
Fair enough.
Yeah, and it's basically, the city first selects the most highly qualified provider based on the standards that people have set in there, and then you negotiate for your fair and reasonable price.
So we could almost eliminate the cost proposal section if we're expecting engineering firms to respond to this?
Are we expecting engineering firms to respond?
I think a lot of engineering firms do, right?
Yes. That's what we, it would be primarily engineering firms that I would expect to do, also to the city planners.
Because they will normally have a vision that's within city plans.
So since this is just off, you know, us saying, yes, staff, go and put it out there for people to bid on, and we don't know price yet, so the little fiscal impact sorts of funding would be looked at at the next meeting when this-
Yeah, we, that's something that we talked about previously, is that it's funded for in the CIP. There's an estimated cost that's been provided for in the CIP, but we won't know those final costs until we get the bids.
Okay, so-
Until we negotiate that contract.
Because it has annotated here requires budget amendment. You just said that, that's what it has on the LSG.
And that's just, I didn't think it never required. I could have missed that.
Okay.
I apologize. I didn't catch that. So it is in the CIP. I know we covered that at the last meeting. It does not require it, but it may require amending the CIP depending on the amount. If we didn't budget enough, budget enough in the CIP, then we may have to make that change.
We have no real expense, much expense asking for the RFP, so we're not really-
No, no, no. Yeah, you're going to make the decision of the award. You're going to negotiate the contract with the winning group, whoever you select. So yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like having our hands tied like that. I do like, I was under the understanding that we could ask them for pricing. I think that's very crucial.
Well, you can also deny it. You can ask for the pricing after you've selected them and then move on to the second. You're not supposed to select on price though, that's the issue.
Got it. But the fact remains that this needs to be done. When I talk to, I spend a lot of time talking to our developers, and I ask them a lot, what's causing you issues? And the biggest thing that causes them issues?
Are ordinances.
Are ordinances. They don't know what to expect. We have defined it, even for Alstation Oaks, we've defined it pretty well, but there's still a lot of things that are not included in our ordinances that become very confusing for them. So they want clarity. It helps them do a better job. And ultimately, what we want to do is to encourage them to do good things and to discourage them from doing bad things. Right now, our ordinances will build San Antonio. And what I've heard from everybody, I would say ninety-five percent of the people that I've talked to, you know I talk to a lot of people about this, I would say ninety-five percent of them don't want to become San Antonio. And that's what our ordinances will produce. And so if we don't do that, we remove clarity from the developers, they will probably build a lesser quality because they've got to build some contingency, extra contingency, and we're building what we don't want to include. So it's imperative that we do this within budget, within what we can afford to do. And so I think that we, although I don't like this process, and I don't like not getting that clarity of finances upfront, I think we've got a pretty good idea of what it is, and we just can't sit around and do nothing. You sit around and do nothing. If you want to have a hand in your own destiny, then you need to have it. Otherwise, somebody will determine it for you.
Yeah, and by the way, this, this professional service, when we hire, when we hire engineers, when we hire architects, when we do our buildings, we first select them on qualifications. And then we say, okay, what's your estimate? And if the estimate comes up above what we believe it should be, you don't have to re-go and do an RFP. You just go to number two or three. But it makes sense to go find somebody based on the quality of qualifications and then start to negotiate the price.
On that note, I would like to move that we authorize the city administrator to request proposals for qualified, qualified planning consultants to prepare a unified development code, UDO, for testing.
With the addition of?
With the addition of the-
Meeting with Texas.
The legal clarification and the addition of items like landscaping, street trees, form-based code, lighting, lighting in common spaces as discussed.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Great. Thank you. Next item is discussion and appropriate action on approving and funding the historic home designation plaques in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars.
For this, Brianna has a presentation?
Oh, look.
Brianna, you're just busy.
Here, I'll touch it around, because I mean, when I very first saw this, I was like, oh, it's like not the same.
I have one that I also said this would come to. I realize it's a very small amount, fifty dollars. But with, for meeting enter the discussion, I'm going to say that I'm going to fund my home no matter what the city does. And otherwise, I mean, you know about, you know what I'm asking?
He's asking about conflict of interest.
So the answer is based on the amount and based on the fact that you are not gaining any benefit that any other person is qualified for?
Okay. It's okay.
Now, you can touch it.
Okay.
I know Priscilla would have loved to be here to give this presentation because she is passionate about this project, but unfortunately, she's in Washington having the really great time. Yeah.
She's zip lining.
She's driving from the airport.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, so she's not there anymore, but she sent me some really beautiful pictures, so I'm still jealous. Okay, so the Historic Landmark Commission would like to provide these plaques with the lettering on them that have the name of the house, the year the house was built, to each of the ninety-six structures. I understand that some of these is our parks, September Square, but it's just a roundabout number just to make sure we have enough funds for everybody who needs one. The original amount was not to exceed six thousand dollars, but after HLC had made that motion or made that recommendation, we got another bid that came in much less than that. And so right now, the new amount is actually three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. And that's with the plaques and with the lettering on top of them, and that would go to every, all the ninety-six homes, or anybody who would want them and would request them.
Don't some of them already have them?
They do, but a lot of them are deteriorated. And so if they already have one, they can always come and ask for another one. But if they don't want to, then, and we're not going to make ninety-six of them because we can't, we have to know the names and the dates anyways. So this would just be up to three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars in case they did want a new one. So.
And this would be put on the house or on a stamp?
That's going to be up to them. Some of them are on stands and some of them are actually nailed to the home. That's going to be their decision.
Do we have the stamps already?
We don't. They would have to provide those themselves. Yeah. And they would have to put them on themselves. Yeah.
Does this include the circle that says CPH?
No, that's not a part of this organism, that's not the same as the ninety-six structures that are listed. This is the one that has that, that plaque right there, just with the lettering of, it doesn't have any kind of symbol on it. It's just the name of the home and the date it was built.
I think that the PCH-
Most of those homes have a CPH sign.
Yeah, but that's a different organization.
So that, I think that was, that was-
Pioneer Castroville Home. So I believe that was-
Was that CCHA that did that one originally?
No, I think it was the Gardening Club.
The Garden Club. That's right. And then I think that-
The first time we brought this up, we were talking about that sign, the circular sign that says Castroville Pioneer Home. Now we're talking about a different sign with a name and a date.
I think-
And I'm a little confused.
That was actually, my understanding is that this is what it was.
This is the only one that HLC has been wanting to bring to you.
I think we just didn't, I think it could very easily come into your mind that that's what we were talking about, and I don't think there was ever any real clarity that it was this sign and not the other one. But it was this sign all along. There was never an intention of the CPH.
Or the PCH.
So now, is this also going to include the, what we consider historical sites, but the state doesn't?
This is the ones that listed on our ninety-six registry. So no, not all the state sites are listed on our ninety-six registry. It's only the ones that we regulate with our ordinances.
The nineteen sixty-nine.
Nineteen sixty-nine survey.
And the Cultural Conservation Society mentioned that they're being, last, right, that they were also, that they were going to be lettering, so it may be that also, maybe that this cost would be less than the combined cost.
That's true. When it went to HLC, there was still, that was still up in the air. So the cost may be less than this if they can contribute, but we just want to make sure we have the cost that we need to provide all of it if they can't. So.
I think it would make Castroville more attractive and interesting place.
And it will help with the historic home tour. So people actually, some of these places, people don't know if they're historic or not. I mean, they look, but you don't really know if they're part of our ninety-six registry. So.
And honestly, we-
Is every home that's supposed to receive one of these signs a private home owned by a private individual? Or does the city own any of these?
There's three. So, well, okay, there's one home, and then there's the two parks. So on that ninety-six registry, the Houston Square is on that, September Square is on that, and then the Castro colonies home is on that. And those are the three city-owned places, I believe. Yeah.
Berry House there.
Berry.
Berry House, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So is City Hall not on the sixty-nine survey?
No.
Not on the list?
No.
It flip-flops.
Last we heard from Texas Historic.
Yeah.
This is regulated by the state in some aspects, but it's not on our sixty-nine survey.
Interesting.
Isn't it-
Because I'm so personal about that a lot.
You didn't think, but you know, last meeting or the meeting before last, how do people know they're a historic home? Well, if they have one of these on it, then if they purchase it, then they're going to, you know, pretty much hide that.
That's correct. Yes.
Still doesn't mean they tell them about the restrictions because-
No, no, I'll still chase them down though.
And Herb, some of these are houses and some are buildings, you know, commercial buildings, and just, but it's on that. And basically, it's, I think, they're in the chamber book. Not all of them. There are some in the chamber, there are some that are missing from the chamber book. Most of them that are in the chamber book are these historic ones.
And even if you have a question on if it is or if it isn't one, right now, there's a link on the, to the GIS map on the Castro website under the historic preservation. And you can go on that map, and all the historic homes that are on our ninety-six survey are, you know, dotted. Yeah, they're identified on there. Sixty, what did I say?
Ninety-six.
Sorry. What time is it? No, I'm just kidding.
Councilman Dar.
Why isn't the Conservation Society paying for these signs?
Um, this is something that was put forth by the HLC, so they're not required to pay for something that this, the city wants to provide. So, yeah.
You're saying the Castro Conservation Society?
I'm just wondering if it was a shared proj, it would, it would be more appealing to me if it was a shared project.
Mm-hmm.
Because I have a fundamental problem with using taxpayer money to put a sign on a private building. I just think it's an improper use of taxpayer money. I have no problem with the three the city owns. I'm all in favor of paying for those because we own it. But I am adamantly opposed to paying for a sign.
Can I speak to that real quick?
That's all I, yeah.
Because I think maybe, and I understand where you're coming from, I think maybe it may be helpful to think about it in these terms. In the same way that we talked about donating surplus equipment to the school district to be able to, as part of their program, they're going to fix these up, they're going to teach the kids, there's a betterment of the community that comes as a process. You all went through an exhaustive process for the vision and mission, and the mayor read those off earlier. And something that's come through time and time again, whether it's the EDC or another, is, has to do with recognizing the unique character of this community, which is made up primarily of the fact that it's a Castro colony, and it has these Alsatian heritage homes. So while it is, you could say it's a private beneficiary because you're going to put this metal sign on that house. Truly, the benefit is greater to the public and to the city at large to recognize those structures as part of its heritage than it is that, I mean, it's a fifty-dollar sign, whatever it is, it's an inexpensive sign that the homeowner could be ambivalent towards, if you want to think about it that way. Truly, the benefit and the reason that the community might consider doing something like this and taking the extraordinary step of saying, we're going to buy these, is because it's, it's one of those things that fulfills the key characteristics, or one of the key characteristics in your mission and vision. And that is to preserve our historic culture and to propel it into the future, to ensure that not only is it something that's visible and recognizable today, but it's something you want to carry forward in the future. So I don't know if that helps you, Herb, but I think, I can fully understand where you're coming from because it's like, hey, we're buying this thing, we're putting it on someone's private residence. But, but if you look at the other side of that coin and say, well, wait a minute, this is a broader thing about the community and recognizing that it doesn't matter who lives there, this home has survived multiple generations of people, and we want to ensure that we recognize that when someone walks by, whether it's a tourist or a local, they look at that home and see that it's something special, that they see that it belongs to something, that it's, that it's got this characteristic to it.
And I would say, for the people- And I would say, for the people who live here, both in the city and in the community, it's a source of pride, it's, historically, as we look at our, our, our mission here, historical comes up every single time, as a key element. In all of the, the surveys that we've done, all of the council workshops, historic has been of, one of the most important things in here, and it is one of the most unique things about Castroville. So I would say, even from a fiscal responsibility side, we get tourism because of that. We have people that come here on our historic walking tour, and they come to Castro specifically because of the history, and so, anything that we're doing to, to honor that, to enhance that, and to protect that, I think that is, both financially and in terms of responsibility to the assets that, that we have been left to, to be stewards of, I think from financial and from stewardship, both, it's imperative. Counselor King.
Yeah, and two things, one, you know, I interact with a lot of tourists, because, you know, Mary and I are coaches up here, and we talk to tourists, and the, the Chamber of Commerce tour, I mean, that's really the biggest benefit of this, is people going down the street, they can say, "Oh, this is a rural house," and they can see that in the book. So this is a tourism out, which, which benefits the city. Also, for the Castro Conservation Society, they don't have a lot of money, and all their money does go for different historic preservation projects around, including some that the city owns, but they are, they have, they do want to participate in this, and they're, they are gonna pay for the, the final lettering that goes on to them, so they are participating. It's just that it's something, this would really tax them also, where they have these other programs, they, they don't make a lot of money, but they try to put it in beneficial places, but, and they're not so much concerned about tourism, and they, from my standpoint, I'm always trying to push tourism, just be a bit more tourism.
So with it being tourism, could we tap into the hot funds?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's, the ultimate rule is heads in beds, to, to, to make, to use those funds, but the fact of the matter is, there's a certain amount that's allowed for marketing and promotion, and I would argue that this falls in marketing and promotion, I could make that, that tie. And I think that there really is, to Phil's point, really and truly, like, this, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be much of a stretch, there is a, there's a, there's a printed document that says, "These are the historic homes," and then there's this, you know, thing that's made, that goes on the historic home, and it's part of the walking tour, and that is a tour, that is most certainly one of our key tourism elements the city offers, I don't think it'd be much of a stretch, frankly.
I would support that.
If that's where you chose to do that, yeah.
If we're doing it with tourism money, not taxpayer money, tourism money-
And you could do that.
I would be willing to support that.
Good idea.
Yeah, that's, and this would be a, I don't, I don't know why we'd think of that, honestly, to staff, because I think it's kind of a slam dunk for-
I'll tell Derek it's okay.
I think it's a slam dunk for that finisher.
So, so we need to state that in our motion, that is, for the hot funds?
Yeah.
So are you making a motion?
Motion approved with caveat.
What's the amount that, that you wanted to modify it to?
It's three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
I move to authorize funding of historic home plaques not to exceed in the amount of three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars out of the hot fund.
Second.
Great, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Now, so this FYI, you know, you have to track your, your hot funds, while you're in seven, then you're gonna have to track my cases.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good note, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Brianna.
What are you saying?
What, are you done already? All right.
You know, related, related to your comment, I don't ever remember, and that's way before Scott ever gratifying somebody like that.
That's true.
But we're supposed to.
It's, it's a good, it's a best practice, let's call it that, it's a best practice.
I like it for a best practice.
Next item is discussion and appropriate action on authorizing staff to issue requests for proposals for a preliminary architectural feasibility report, an RFP, and proposals for an environmental report for the Texas Community Facilities Direct Grant administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
For this, we have Devin Fredrickson. I will just say, the amount of projects that Devin's had on this board this year, the, probably the grandest and biggest of which was giving the birth, birth to a child in December.
He delegated that.
Yeah, he did. But, but it got delegated right back to him, I'll tell you that, in sleepless nights and bottles and everything else. The amount of projects, and, and this is not, if it were just Devin, it'd be really extraordinary, because, you know, all of our staff is being, there's a lot of projects that they have, it's just been very impressive to see the work that's gotten done, whether it's kind of the Streets Project, or the Lions Park Project, or the Pool Eating Project, or the Community Center Project we're talking about now, or, you know, just, the list goes on and on. We got a new, new center, we expanded the library, there's been a number of things. The City Hall Expansion Project goes off on our facilities, and those evolved into Devin's careful purview, so, appreciate what you're doing, and this is, take it away.
Well, the item I'm bringing to you, we've turned in all of our, our paperwork, thank you to Leroy and Scott for helping me get that collected. The last thing that is required is the architectural and environmental. The environmental we had years ago, it, it was just too far, and with this, the USDA, they provided us to EMC these specific requests, so, to move forward with the grant, we would have to follow their procedures, you know how they can be with the airport project, y'all are very much aware. So, once we, if, if this is approved tonight, we're, we're trying to streamline this, so, do y'all have any questions in relation to this?
It boils down to the USDA requires it, we're going through their process, and, yeah.
It's a budgeted item, so.
God bless Devin for working with the USDA.
Excuse me, what is the project that requires these reports?
This is for the Community Center.
Okay, Community Center.
We were awarded the, the grant for the Community Center at the pool, and this is just part of the process that we have to go through to appease, well, to follow the rules that they have set up for that.
We got one point seven, right, out of the two point four that we need, so we, we got some of the money.
Yeah, we have, we had-
If we get the grant.
Yeah, we had four hundred thousand set aside in the CIP, so that's being added to that, so we're up to like two point one.
Yes.
We have reached out to, to Texas Parks and Wildlife to see if we could leverage their grant, they have an indoor facilities grant, excuse me. One of the things that will be coming to you over the summer is to look at a Texas Parks and Wildlife matching grant for other projects, but unfortunately, this is not one of them.
Great. So do I, any other questions? Do I have a motion? Oops, sorry.
The, the earlier environmental work you had, you know, was right.
Um, yes, the friends had sent that over, I believe it was done in two thousand and seven. It wasn't an official report, it was done by an environmentalist, but it wasn't to the criteria and specifics that USDA, USDA has adopted at this point in time. And also, too, it's, to my understanding, this is a new process to me, too, is that these two will work together, because the environmental can't be completed until there is an architectural plan, so that they know the official impact. We have a design, but they want something official so that they can, you know, say, "Okay, this is not gonna make an environmental impact that, you know, can, can harm the environment."
Yeah, I guess if we make sure that that original bomb is turned in, the original report, if we have it, if we're still around, because the most bad is data collection, and if they, and, but another firm's not gonna be able to trust their data collection, but they're around them, and they can, and there's no reason that they, for instance, a rock and, 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 and-
Yes, absolutely.
So if that firm is still around, then they, they're gonna be the most reason.
Do we know who did that?
I, not offhand. I, I have all-
Let's, let's research and find out who did that, and see if they're still operating.
We have, I have all of the, the stuff that Helen has given over the years, our architectural, the, the previous stuff that had to be submitted way back in the day to Texas Parks and Wildlife, and then also our archaeological, I have all of that stuff in my office, and I have scanned almost all of it and have it on a hard drive, too, so that if, for some reason, something goes wrong. I'm not sure, Deborah, if any of that stuff, most of it's not originals, but I can provide that to you and have that for access.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
Put it on the cloud. With that, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize staff to request RFPs for the Texas Community Service Facility Direct Grant.
One second.
Great, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Devin.
Have a good evening.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess at eight oh two.
Do we have our staff reports? Oh, I've got them. You're fourteen on the fourth page.
Yeah, here, here's a better one. He still has his upper body, but he turned around and goes, "I lost my blood," but he's back to the gym now, and he also got a bicycle, so he's pedaling around on his free time, and the hills. Well, but, but right now, he's at Colorado, they're, they're in California, so, you know, so he's got the hills, and, yeah, yeah, he's there, his school there, so, but yeah, that's the Surface Warfare School, it's called BDOC, and he's there until mid-August, and then he'll fly to Japan.
It's a long time to get out of California.
And then he goes to Japan, probably Japan for twenty days.
I don't even, I definitely-
Yeah.
It's probably in Japan as well, I'm sure they-
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I know, most of my, I know the kids.
There you go. But, yeah, he, uh-
He's a listener at Mary's.
There you go, yeah, they're busy over there. And he, uh-
He's not there yet, he's got, yeah.
Yeah, he'll be, he'll be in Japan for twenty days in August, and then he'll go back to California for forty days, for his, uh, his next school, and then he'll be back to Japan in October, and then three years.
Three or four days with the boys.
Yeah, that's it. I was just like, I was just like, for, for his hotel, for, then he's, he's had to stay there through his school.
Better walk under the land.
The on base was off, you know, the, yeah, I mean, there's two star hotel in the same hotel, he's at now, and it's, like, ooh, yeah, my office or shit, so.
This junior mill, I apologize.
They still treat offices a lot better than they do at this point. So the hotel he's staying at, because it's only eighty-six dollars a night.
To what now?
It's like, oh, bro, I'm sure. We, we even looked at the hotel.
Really striking.
Right on the beach, they're stuffed with it.
Yeah.
I saw it yesterday. I was, when I was mayor, and I was recruiting officers, I used to go to-
Even though it was coffee station, but if you were a student, they'd charge you a month.
Definitely go off some.
No matter how much money you had.
You've got to agree behind you.
Exactly.
Because I spent three years here.
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, that's, that's people's first for, like, you want a counter. And they, at that time, they started, you know, to do-
You can do it, do it.
Oh, yeah, exactly, and, exactly, with the tools and the capabilities, so, why would it be on?
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't know, the station, I think, because I'm scraping my hair.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, that's all I got.
My bowling partner's broker, I don't want to mention such a thing.
Going to Hollywood, going to Montreal, very hard place.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, she's up in, she went up to, yeah, so, he's, uh, he's gonna have some traveling and everything, but we found a museum for him to go, and he really chose it. It's the museum on ramen. Ramen noodles, and inside the, no, no, this is Japan, and in the hope, in the museum, they have different restaurants from all the different regions in Japan, and they're different ramen, and you can learn how to-
It's worth of exploration.
Well, well, and they have the corridor and everything decorated as if it's nineteen fifty, yeah, with the, yeah, yeah, and then you can learn how to make ramen noodles from scratch.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, it was-
That's not, these gotta be in the-
Supposed to be a different date.
You don't have to be there, you don't have to be there, so that's why I changed, I knew that you wanted to go.
All right, Deborah, let me know when you're ready. All right, we're gonna reconvene at eight oh eight. Next item is discussion and appropriate action on nomination and election of a mayor pro temp. Discussion. Do I have a nomination, or do I have discussion?
I nominated the last two, so I'm gonna file this down.
I nominate Phil Keane.
Nice.
You're it now, you're doing such a fabulous job.
All right, do we have any other nominations?
I move the nominations clause, and Phil Keane is appointed by acquisition.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations, Phil.
You're voluntold again.
Do I get a, do I get a?
You don't get a name, name, place, you're done.
There, see?
And I went officially over the last year, I think, I, it's a billion for, for there, maybe one minute, maybe two minutes.
I think he made it to like fifteen, that person.
No, it was two minutes.
Two minutes. It's not a, not a high-stress job.
You can work on a vision.
But, you know, honestly, you filled in, in a lot of other areas in backing up with that, and handling a lot of other things, and with the trip to DC, I think that you represent the, the city really well, and as our official ambassador as well, to all say so.
Related, I don't know, I mean, I'm supposed to skate with you, if you're not here, you and I are gonna be together representing the city.
What are we gonna do?
We'll run it.
Thank God, man.
All right, Brianna's in charge.
I sign the checks when they're, when nobody's available, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm, you know.
All right, next item is appointment of council board liaisons. So we have, let's see, oh, I don't have my candy list for this.
Can you start by my commission library?
That is a good list of order. In your packets, there should be a list of the, who's on there now, of the boards.
So, how do you wanna do this? Do you wanna just go down the line individually, do we wanna talk through it?
And go down the line, that's what we've been doing all these years.
Okay. Well, I think that, let's, let's look at this, if you're interested in a board, if there's something, just, let's, let's list the board that you would be maybe first and second choice, and we'll talk through that and figure out the, the best placement for everybody. Okay, so first and second choice.
Airport. Second would be, yeah.
Airport.
Airport.
I'm very happy being the liaison to the planning and zoning commission, and my second would be those are the board adjustments, as, as I've already said. Unless somebody else really wants to. My first choice would be airport, second choice, can I pick library? My wife's on the library, she joked it would be fewer meetings a month for us.
They're not a, it's not a con, keep in mind, these are volunteer boards where, where-
Or just advising.
The appointees, they're just advising, they aren't employees, you aren't supervising, and there's no conflict of interest. there's no conflict of interest and it might make, I don't know, it might actually make your life easier if you're on library, but I, can you think of any, yeah, there's no, there's no reason that you couldn't be on it.
And I generally don't speak unless they ask me to, so it's not like you need to participate.
Well, I think that, well, that's...
Second choice, library.
There you go. All right, Herb?
Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec.
I had a, I'll tell you this real quick, I, I had a assistant scout master, this is when I was newly married, I got, I got to be, I was, I worked in Weebleows and I was in scouting for a very long time and I had scout, assistant scout master and he basically was, he, he named himself assistant scout master for life and he was, he'd been assistant scout master from the time I was a twelve-year-old, basically, and through all different scout masters, he was the guy, none of it we'd call, he was kinda like our Arnie, he'd call to say, "Okay, you know, we're going camping this weekend." Sometimes boys would go, sometimes they wouldn't, he'd go camping anyway. He went camping every single weekend or every time it was, it was, it came up, but he was literally the assistant scout master for life, for that troop. So, sometimes you find a calling, sometimes you find a thing that, that works for you and I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
And I'll take this opportunity, I wanna make sure that we understand what this role is. This is the liaison to the, to the board and the way that I look at our boards and our commissions, this is an extension of us, so we represent people, this helps us spread that out a little bit more, they're representing like specific interests inside of the city who are then reaching out even above and beyond that and so the airport liaison to me is, it's a crucial role in making sure that, that the boards and commissions understand the direction of council, so you are the voice of council at these board meetings. So, if they need guidance, if they're asking for guidance, if they're going in a direction that you feel is either right on board with what council has expressed or against what council has expressed, this is your opportunity to make sure that we have alignment between council and the boards and when they bring things forward, if they bring something forward that is outside of the alignment of, of council, then I'm gonna ask you why that wasn't communicated or how that was communicated with them, so this is crucial that we are acting as that bridge, so being active in them, being communicative in them, we're not running that, but we are the, the representatives.
And I would just caveat that, just to make sure, 'cause I know that you and I have talked about this, just to clarify the statement, boards and commissions will make whatever decision they make, the, the concern that Mayor expressed was if they do something that's contrary to what we know that council kinda wanted or directed, that may be very well out of your control, as I know Councilman Dyer knows and probably some of you, some of you have experienced as well, and that's okay, it's just in those moments, what the Mayor is saying is he wants to, he would like to know, and I'm putting words in your mouth, well, what was communicated to them and how was it communicated so that we could better understand, well, why did they, why did they go right when we thought they were gonna go left, right?
And it's both ways, it's making sure that we understand why they're going in a direction if it, if it seems a little bit strange, so it is really a crucial part in, in actually communicating with the public. So, I think that what we end up...
In the end of that, my, my, you know, I pretty go reporting and they'll, quite often they'll say, "Well, you know, what, what does council think about this?" And I say, "Well, I, I've had one person that's based on discussions, I think they'd be in favor or not in favor and things like that, or, or I'll even advise, we really need to get a simple planing on it before you break into council because this doesn't give us a clear understanding of what you all are asking." So, they, they don't mind.
No.
When I approached this, quite similarly, when the, when we had our high schoolers that were trying to do the Kobe Memorial, just trying to help them understand, I, I took on a personal role with them because I, I liked the fact that they wanted to accomplish something and I thought it was a great opportunity for them because it was highly controversial, what they were trying to do, where they were trying to do it, how they were trying to do it, I'm like, "This is a great learning opportunity for you." And I kinda guided them through the process of how would you present it to them, what would you look at for options, and it's, it's that kind of thing, I wasn't saying you need to go do this and I wasn't saying, you know, it wasn't clear, like, specific directing them that way, but helping them through that process of finding alignment. And I think that's the thing, if, if I have a, a, a theme for this year, it is finding that alignment where we are all not necessarily agreed on the exact path to get to the place where we're still, we're all trying to get to that same place. So, I think that what we end up with is District One, Sheena, on airport, District Two, Paul Carey, on P and Z and ZBOA, District Three, Phil King, on HLC, District Four, David Murs, on library, and District Five, Herb, on Parks and Rec.
I wanna mention just for Paul's benefit, you know, with this UDO, yeah.
You're gonna be busy.
There's gonna be a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, so...
It's one of them here.
Well, and I, I commend each and every one of you, I know that this is a lot of work, we talked last time, or I talked a lot, last time about all of the volunteer efforts and this is one of, this is a very intensive, very important effort and the, the time and effort that you put into it is, is much appreciated.
David, like, if you only want to buy, instead of, you gotta volunteer for something else, you don't have any idea what you own.
One more night with you, huh?
As long as she's happy with it.
If you want her to report, you ask me.
Um, yeah, we didn't put it on, on the next agenda, thank you.
Sorry, I left it off.
I noticed that too, but I noticed it too late.
I love us. Your liaison.
We didn't have the liaison reports, we normally have that right after the, the Mayor's report. I think I threw her off with last time because I went out of turn. All right, next item is staff reports.
I, I also want to back up to, to airport liaison, it's something that they've been assigned, that they've taken on, Matt Ewalt is their, the board president right now and they've expressed a sincere desire to help the city in identifying safety issues at the airport and how to, how to, how to control those. So, I, I think your expertise and background would be very appreciated if you wanna reach out to him, let him know, I know that's something Brianna is also falling upon, 'cause for me, as far as all the things happening at the airport and all the other issues we have going on, that's one of the most important things that we fall upon, so.
Yes, sir.
How soon do you think twenty, well, a lot of...
Do we have any applicants for airport director or manager?
We have that.
Yeah, so, it's not really on the agenda, but we don't have funding to do it, I, I mentioned it once before in council meeting, there's no funding to hire to replace him. When we, when he moved to other pub works, we took most of his salary and put it into two new positions, which are still filled, you have a, a contract position with Brian and a, a, a full-time position in Pete, that's where most of his money went and what's left is going to him for administration, I'm taking that money and dividing it between Brianna and a small raise for Pete in recognition of the additional operation duties he's taken on.
So, we're not gonna hire a replacement?
Not at this time, that's something that we can look at.
This is not an agenda item.
Yeah, yeah, that's something we look at in the future budget and I'll have it, Herb and, and Sheena, both of you brought this up, I will have that for discussion when we talk about the budget, if that's something that we wanna try and consider, but it's a real challenge for the airport fund, I'll just tell you that right.
So, under staff reports, I believe there's a piece on here about airport and community development, so potentially you could ask on that. Were there any other questions? Do you wanna highlight anything on the staff reports?
I have a good kudo.
Yeah, please.
For police department, I'd like to acknowledge Officer Knutson.
He's not here.
Yeah, I know, but...
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I don't want to pull, I don't want to pull, Officer Quick, the two left out, go ahead.
But no, as the American Legion Post four sixty, Officer of the Year.
Officer Knutson is the Officer of the Year for the American Legion Post, so, as far as items in the, in the report, I'm sorry, I did, I reviewed them this afternoon, but I didn't make specific note of anything that I wanted to call out.
I really like this police report.
Yeah?
It is, you know, I, I can see which officers were diligent, looking out and pulling people over and...
Well, if you like this one, you're gonna like the next one better, 'cause the Mayor, the Mayor and our Chief have had a lot of back and forth on reports and...
What day, what day of the month, activities are, everything, you know, it's, I mean, what? You know, it's amazing how many calls you get for, for looking at businesses, you know, what's your call, there's that one, the security checks. So, there's, keeps you guys busy, so, yes, so, I, I wish you could ask them to report about Walmart calls.
Well, we can, we are working on doing heat maps and things of that nature, like I said, if you like the way it is now, I, I think you'll be more pleased with future reports 'cause it'll have this level of detail plus some.
Is the watch guard server and the, the other server that we replaced, are they operational yet?
Yeah, so, yes, and there's been a lot of training that's been going on in our PD, one of the things you'll see in the report, and I asked, I met with the Chief, actually, today's Tuesday, Monday, yesterday, it feels like it's already later, but, we talked about his accomplishments just since he's been here and it was a, it was a front and back sheet of paper, you know, single line of all the things they've accomplished and, you know, it's easy to, to, anyway, it's just, they've done an impressive amount of things and one of the things that's been going on is just a tremendous amount of training. I will tell you, there is a disconnect between our municipal court and the new ticket writer system, it's the exact same system that they have in Honda, same, same ticket writers, same in code, same everything, and we are having a world of problems that they aren't and it's something that the Chief has been diligently working on, there's been a couple of issues that, you know, it boils down to, we're gonna get it fixed, but there's just some extraordinary issues where the consultant at one point had a very serious medical issue, was out of touch for like two weeks and couldn't get some things fixed, the way our information was in our system is different than the way Honda had theirs entered and so their transition was a lot easier than ours has been, but we're working on getting that fixed, Herb, but barring that change, they are, I would say eighty to ninety percent down the road with, with these technology adoptions, these enhancements.
And one of the enhancements, I don't think that we've talked about, is the, as we talk about the interoperability, it is the communication between the cities, the individual cities and the county in, in identifying where the officers are, I know that they're already, they're already testing that out with our officers being able to see where other ones are around, so it makes dispatch, inter, inter-agency dispatch a whole lot more, a whole lot better. So, we continue to work really closely with...
We would buy, like, the fire department, so CAD system, dispatch, the line, the night system, the third, my all reported, and third, all through CAD, into RMS, so the officers now, it's use of proxy numbers, the field report system, but right now it's a five to four block, nine, eight, they provide the, provide on that.
So, what that enables is when you call, when you call the dispatch, or dispatch calls you and says, "You're going to this," that call gets recorded through the dispatch system, through CAD, and then actually talks to RMS, our report management system, RMS, it's never done that, this is the first time this has been, been in place. We are pursuing even greater interoperability in, on a couple of different, like scatter sheets, like a couple of different avenues and ways, some of those I, I don't anticipate will be successful at, frankly, because it's, the ask is too big, the level of cooperation is probably too much at this stage with this, with the, with the people that we have in place, but I, I will tell you that he's got his foot on that gas pedal, the Chief does, and, and really is trying to move the department forward and I think the officers have been a beneficiary of that, but we've been a beneficiary of the officers and their cooperation in getting that done, so kudos to, to PD.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You'll see in the airport report and what Community Services put together, I, I'll just speak to the fact that Brianna has taken on, taken on those administrative roles, being very candid, I wasn't sure how that was gonna work out, because neither Sheena nor I know anything about aviation, I have managed airports before, so I can tell you, I can, I can hit the, the highlights, as it were, but I am not David, you know, he spent a tremendous amount of time learning the code and he is an aviator and those things helped him tremendously. He, we are suffering a significant loss with him gone and it, and the airport already was struggling, we had, just, again, being very candid, in having David there, we got the deal of the century, as far as what we were paying him when he first was the airport manager and he came on and did, and then, I mean, he literally got offers for double what he was making to go somewhere else and he didn't because of family issues and other, other things and ultimately, you know, he's now with, with Tech Stop because that, that's something that appealed to him and financially benefited him considerably, so I think it will be something that will be a major budgetary challenge if that's the way we move, but I would ask for your latitude and grace to, to let's, to let us manage it the way we're doing it right now and I don't think we're, we're taking great gambles as far as risking things, we're working, you know, Brianna's working very closely with Pete and with that airport advisory board, they are well aware of the budgetary situation that the airport's in and I think, as I alluded to with Sheena, they're willing to step up and take on some of those roles that they haven't done, but they had done previously, so I think we need to try to kinda let, let's see how this works, give it a good solid, you know, six to eight months and see where we stand, but that's, again, if we decide to make a change, it's kinda like the IT change that Herb, you've kind of alluded to, we're about to get to the end of that process where we'll get an RFP and then we'll see, we'll see what kind of bids we get in. If we get into the position where we need to hire an airport manager with aviation experience, someone that was, would be similar to David, we're gonna have to make drastic changes in how we fund the airport and, and the revenues at the airport, 'cause as it is right now, they couldn't, they wouldn't be able to afford to do that. Things to think about.
The glaring omission from the airport report was, I didn't even check Morris.
Yeah, I looked for it too, she didn't...
Stop the walk, Tom.
Yeah.
Scott challenged David early on to include something about check Morris.
I actually explained, I, I said to this whole staff, I said, "You know, something funny I've seen other people do is they'll put in just weird tidbits just to see if the council's reading and see if someone's actually paying attention to the report."
And every single report...
And he took that to heart and he put it in there and almost everyone.
Are they funny?
The pictures in the, the parks report are, are pretty telling, you can see the low, low improvement, that, that field, we've been keeping a very close eye on it, thanks to our police department, there's been some collaboration between all of our departments, that's one of the areas where we've been cooperating to make sure that that field was protected, when the sod was new, that nobody was walking off with it, we did find a sign out there one day that said, "Free sod" and that guy loading up his truck, believe it or not, I would highly suspect the guy was, the same guy loading up was the guy that brought the sign, but either way, he pleaded ignorance and was told to go on his merry way, so that's been a concern of mine, is that it's such a nice-looking field that people would try to, try to steal from us, but there's a lot of work going on there, rain has hampered most of that, obviously the revenues are, are doing very, very well, we're at two hundred sixty-four thousand, I'm sorry, two hundred thousand, and the budget was two sixty-four, so they're, they're, they're gonna knock it out of the park again this year.
They're gonna knock it out of the park?
Yeah, I said, yeah, I know.
I appreciate that.
On the splash pad, is the ground, the, the cement, like rough, the anti-slip stuff or anything?
On the what, on the splash, yes, yes, it has a treatment, our guys, it's one of the other areas that our guys have done, they've just done a lot, so it's one of the things Devon did, was research a bunch of different application processes, they tested them, they sought an architectural engineer to, to help them pick the right product and they are applying that product so that they can do the ongoing maintenance, but it's essentially a, a polymer paint type that has grit in it, yeah.
Thank you.
This is the concrete.
Yeah.
It's a concrete covering.
I thought there was a company that we, that designed that and built that and everything, they didn't...
They, yeah, they did, again, we went through, we, we had several different options to, to cover it, but ultimately we decided to do it in-house, 'cause when we looked at the pricing, you could pay thirty-five thousand dollars to have a company do it or you could pay like six to eight and maintain it yourself and you ended up, you know, with the same, you know, something that was the same, same or superior quality product, so...
And made payable.
Yeah.
And you know the end's announced.
And the one thing to, to remember, to call out, if you can share, I think that, who originally shared it, was it Arnie? I saw it shared by the chamber. I saw it, uh, shared by the chamber for the Lyons Park grand opening on June tenth.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I wish he's got something.
Yeah, I sent it out to you all, but Arnie may have mentioned it as well. So, yeah, please mark your calendars.
If you have social media, please do share his version of that. I put something out as well, but, uh, but it should be tracked to his.
We'll have, uh, I think there's going to be some free food. We've got a couple of sponsors that have stepped up. It should be really neat. But there's a lot of work to do between now and then. And we, we love the rain, we just don't want it to rain on that little square of acreage.
Anymore.
We like the four inches of rain.
Just not at once.
We are in stage two. That was announced today. You got the I-INFO. Uh, stage two means that you're still restricted to watering only once a week on your address, but the signs that say severe drought, no watering will no longer appear until we, until or unless we move into another stage. So just be aware of that.
Went up nineteen.
Are we talking about, uh, the report? Okay, yes, please.
Number one, I noticed that improvements everywhere, the library, more people, more books, the, the airport, as you said, community services, still a lot of problems, not with them, but with the paints are.
Compliance.
Was there a, I didn't see the tourism business development report. Did I miss that?
Yeah, it's not in. Um, I, yeah, it's not in. It, yeah. Yeah, he'll be, he's actually up, he, he, right now, he's working remotely. His, uh, he had a, a health issue with his parents. He's, so, that's where he is right now. If I, if I get an updated report, I certainly will. Yeah, I know that there's a video that he's working on that, uh, he sent to the mayor and I to, to look over and review. It's about histories, to kind of touch on our, the history. He's been working, uh, very closely with Quiddity on getting the open house done, those, those signs. He designed the, the banners and then he and I actually went out and put up those banners. Um, he's been, anyway, he's been very active with the chamber. Uh, we've got to get internet, uh, to him, but he will be officing at the chamber, largely because there is no internet at the, uh, airport and getting internet out there is not, not an option. Uh, so it looks like we're going to put him over where the, the new office of the chamber will be. There's a lot of, oh, yeah. Yeah, they're very excited to have a neighbor, have him as a neighbor, so. Working on that.
All right, any other questions about the staff report?
No, thank you.
All right. Next item is discussion on future agenda items.
I, uh, next meeting, I'm going to bring a resolution for us to become a sister city with, which?
Uh, what do you say?
Wiggentown.
So that'll be the third one?
That'd be the third.
The third one is.
Can you spell that? I'm sorry?
Yes. We'll, we'll send it over to you.
What's the name of it? Wiggentown?
When we go over there, they've shown an interest, um, to become a sister city with us, um, that the Haglen family, who is, um, from that little area as well as the other type, um, but anyway, they had heard we were coming over there and asking for a possibility to become a sister city with us, so, uh, that's what I'll bring.
Comes with tons of perks, right? Comes with tons of perks, right?
Yeah.
So Whitlesham is W-I-T-T-L-E-S-H-E-I-M.
Whittlesham.
By the way, in Alsatian language, it means city. So we go see there's.
It means city, that word?
That high.
Whittle, high. Whittlecity.
So, uh, almost all these little cities, uh.
Lakeville, Lake Cesterville. San Antonioville.
All right.
And you'll, you'll bring that?
I'll bring that. I'll put one of those together, bring that for resolution for next meeting.
Okay, do you want to send it to me for me to put on the paper?
Yes, but I also, I want to see how, would you explain, copy the last one we did and whatever.
It's actually up on the wall, back up here.
Okay, but I mean, the resolution and when that came, the council board, he obviously took that.
I'll go back because I don't know, I wouldn't hear when we did. They haven't, we haven't done a sister city since I've been. So I'll have to go back and see when we became a sister city.
I guess, I, whether, however we did, I guess.
And we'll work that offline.
I'll make it up.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any future agenda items? Okay. One of the things that I want to make sure that we, uh, cover, and I'll add this on, uh, is the, we've had some conversations about the waste management contract, about the bulk pickup versus. No, shall we thank Molly? Thanks, Molly. All right, so, um, uh, I want to bring something back about the, uh, the bulk pickup and the brush pickup. Councilman King had reviewed the, the contract, I had reviewed it as well, just to understand exactly what's in there. Uh, Scott was going to follow up and, and determine what that is. So, uh, I want to bring that back and make sure that we are fully aware of when, uh, brush can be put out and, uh, look at. Right, and look at modifications to either our communication, if it currently fits with more brush pickup, or with our contract itself, if it doesn't. To make sure that we have more brush pickup, more in line with what we had before.
Yeah, so I, I, as far as brush, um, yeah, I'm just going to go back to the reports, so we did on the report items. One of the things that's pointed out is, is under the contract, you put brush out every single month. I did confirm there was a disconnect between staff and Phil and my understanding. So I've corrected that issue. Uh, this, Devin is going to go, reread the contract and we're going to work with waste management to make sure that everybody's on the same page. As far as cleanup, one of the things that we're going to have to talk to them about is they don't.
So this will be on the agenda item for next time? So this is, uh, under the agenda item portion of it? So we'll make sure that we just.
That's something we're currently working on, so we should be prepared to talk to you about.